Good morning. Want to welcome all of you to the Tuesday, June 7th, 2022 meeting of the Sacrament County Board of Supervisors. We're glad to see the folks in chambers that are joined with us, and we also welcome those who are watching us live remotely. And with that, having called the meeting order, I'll first ask the clerk to call the role to establish a quorum, then we have some announcements in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll be right into the agenda, so bear with us for a few moments. Flo, turn to you.
Good morning. Supervisors, Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on a Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, June 10th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestream and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call off-agenda matters, and when the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. To make a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. You may be on hold for an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. If you want to send a comment in writing, please send it to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the meeting record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff or for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Great. Thank you, Flo, for the announcements. If we could, I'd invite Supervisor Desmond, please listen to the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we jump into the agenda, I know we have some off-agenda speakers. Not that folks need to be reminded, but today is Election Day, so if you haven't had a chance to cast your ballot, your polls are open to 8:00, or you can get it in the mail before I get a postmark today, so we encourage folks to exercise the right to vote, and hopefully your candidates and issues of choice will prevail. But nonetheless, we certainly encourage you to cast your vote today. With that, we'll go to our agenda for any items to be continued, and then we'll take the off-agenda. And we've got good audio today, but there's a little feedback.
I'm going to ask Metro if they can help maybe adjust the audio levels in the back. And so, we're going to do our off-agenda comments first?
Yes. Yeah. And I would just introduce our -- we have someone who's been with the council's office for many, many years, but I don't know if you've actually sat in session with us, have you?
Not with this board.
Not with this board. So anyway, thank you for being with us, and I know we're always very capable hands with our council representatives, but good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Flo, so we'll go ahead with our off -- we'll take our off-agenda speakers.
Yeah, and I think you have some folks in chambers, and you have some on the phone.
Okay, so we'll take those that are in chambers first. Now, these are off-agenda items, items that are not on today's agenda to be acted upon, but we certainly welcome comments, and we'll allow speakers up to three minutes to make their comments. And so, I'll just take these in order that they were placed at my desk here. And first, I have Chris Spiegel, followed by Tina Yo, and then Dan Aderhold. So, Chris and Tina, you're the first ones up.
Good morning.
Yes, right there. Yeah, we can raise -- we'll raise the podium up just a little bit. Clerk has the ability to -- there you go. All righty.
Thank you for me being the very first person. This is a follow-up to the town hall meeting that Mr. Serna had, and it's just a general. It may not be able to be addressed today, but didn't seem to be clear at the meeting. The power in, and I put gerberate, but it's power in and flooring, homeless, I'm going to call it a facility. What's the definition for success? And my follow-up to that is, who is in charge of what, in my previous job, we call metrics? So, who is in charge of following up on what success means, and how often do they report, and to whom do they report?
Okay. Well, Chris, as you know, this is on the agenda for tomorrow, that consideration of the item, so I think putting your questions out there today gives us an opportunity to hopefully offer some responses tomorrow's hearing. And we come into session tomorrow at 10:00 with --
At 10:00.
At 10:00 tomorrow.
Okay.
That is correct, Madam Clerk. We were a half hour later start tomorrow, it's 10:00.
Correct.
Yeah, so 10:00 tomorrow, Chris, will be that item. Again, your questions have been heard, and I don't know if anybody wishes to respond, but again, appreciate you being here this morning, and we'll probably see you back tomorrow. So, good. Thanks, Chris. And if staff would just note those questions, it'd probably be good to cover those tomorrow. All right, Tina? Tina, you know? And we can adjust the podium the other way? Thanks.
Sorry, my daughter asked me not to speak.
She asked you not to speak?
I speak four languages, but when I get nervous, I can't get any word out.
Okay.
So, I'm just going to show you guys this.
Okay, don't be nervous. Okay. So, we can just actually -- we can display those, Tina, so if you want to put them on that white spot there, just right there, yeah, if you wanted to do that, and then we can bring those up and -- okay. And you can leave, if you want to leave those with the clerk, we can make them a matter of the record.
I'll leave it to you.
Okay, very good. And then, as you know, tomorrow, it will actually be on our agenda for consideration, so you're welcome back, and we thank you for being here today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Nothing to be nervous about, you did just fine. Okay. All right. Okay, so next, I have Dan Aderhold, who signed up on a couple different topics, and then followed by Claudia Aderhold. So, we've got the Aderhold team here this morning. Good morning, Dan.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Glad to see you walking about, Phil Serna. Hope you feel better soon.
Thanks.
I'm giving you an update about Mecca Homes Crew and Park Recreation. We've been doing a fabulous job working together, and we just did a major event last week, and we have another one on 17th on the Mecca Parkway. We took over five tons of trash off the parkway during this event in less than three hours, so that was really good. We are making a public event for everybody to come who wants to help us, and we want to thank Human Resources too, because they've been out there helping us, I believe his name is Metcalf, or something like that, and helping the homeless out there. I don't know why they classify him as a homeless advocate, but he's out there helping the homeless. And I want to thank you guys for bringing us together with Board and Park, you know, and Park Recreation. I want to thank you guys for that, because you know what, that was something well done, well put together, you know what I mean? And we're working together as a great team. I just want to thank you guys.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Dan. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate your efforts as well, so. Okay, with that, then Claudia Aderhold. Hi. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, basically, what I do is a little bit different from what Dan Aderhold does, my husband. I'm mostly on the animal side. I'm a pet, a homeless pet advocate, and I know very seldom that comes into your agenda. So, I just want to bring up a few topics. We may not be able to go over in three minutes, but for example, you currently have, I believe something that was, right now is about to pass, which is PAS Pet Assistance Support Program. That is actually a program you have under the Housing and Community Development. The intent of that program, I believe, is to secure $10 million in some fundings for shelters to develop also assistance to the pets for the unhoused or homeless. The reason I'm bringing that up is because I'm not sure if you really have had the chance to really think about that. In the last 30 days, we have had three dog attacks, which have resulted in a lot of mauling and, you know, bodily injury. As you know, those are extensive bills. Also, most of the homeless have pit bulls, which under insurance and liability, that is my background, that is really huge. You have to consider, if I look at the numbers from Major Steinberg, he allegedly says that there's 11,000 homeless. Those, that's from a Sacramento B, what's it called?
Article.
Article, last year. So, if I take 11,000 homeless, and I'm going to do what I did two months ago, multiply it by four, you're looking at a very large substantial number of homeless pets. So, I'm not sure how realistic this proposal is for you. I'm not sure if you really are looking into taking up on that liability. All it takes will be one dead dog or one injured person. So, that is a huge risk. I understand there's a lot of money involved. I mean, $10 million is not 5,000, but I think we can do a lot more with much less than what you're looking at in spending in this program.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. I would just, I wanted to return to County Executive for a moment. When we did the Neighborhood and Parkway Initiative some five years ago now, we explicitly set aside a position in Animal Care to assist in both in the parkway but in the neighborhoods as it related to not just pets of those who are unhoused, but I think to work that area, recognizing that there are city-county jurisdictions along the parkway. So, that position was funded, and it was specifically designated to assist there. I know a couple of my colleagues would remember that. And so, and I think it's important, if we're having, again, recognizing their issues, certainly pet ownership and care, but also issues that relate to folks who may be doing cleanups on the parkway, using the parkway for all the purposes that it's intended to be there for, we need to look at that position. It was established, it ought to be assigned, I believe, for that purpose, to assist in that regard, and I don't know whatever happened to it. You know, we make budget decisions, allocate positions, and then they kind of get lost in the mass. And so, I trust that if those positions are filled, that, you know, that was the Board's intent, and someone could look that up if they question that, so.
And thank you, Supervisor Natoli. We are bringing a workshop from the Animal Care Department after the break, and we'll be sure to include that as part of that presentation.
Okay. And I know we had difficulty filling some positions for a while, but nonetheless, I think that that was clearly, and that's not where we allocate to a department, where an elected department has the authority to --
Correct.
That was clearly under the guidance of, you know, obviously County Executive, and I, you know, you weren't the County Executive at the time that was done, so it might help put a little more focus on some of the issues that Claudia brought forward, so.
Yes.
Good. Okay, thank you, Ann. All right. So, those were the off-agenda speakers. I know, Mr. Aderhold, you signed to speak on item 40. That's not going to be till this afternoon, so I don't know if you can stand to hang around, or certainly you're welcome to come back, but that won't be heard until 2:15, Dan, so. Okay, anybody else on off-agenda in the chambers before I go to the phones? I don't see it. And then, just for Tina and Chris, once again, the hearing tomorrow is, it starts at 10:00, and that's regarding the site at the Power End of Florin, so just so you'll know that. All right, we'll go to the phones, off-agenda.
Okay, Jillian, please transfer the first caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, Board. We request that the misinformation resolution be revised to explicitly recommend to the public that they read all the Pfizer documents from the FOIA litigation in the name of making sure that people don't fall for misinformation, given this is the true science directly from Pfizer and the FDA themselves. This is through the court-ordered FOIA release in public health and medical professions for transparency versus FDA and Pfizer. From the Freedom of Information Act against the FDA and Pfizer, in the Northern District of Texas, they were ordered to release previously undisclosed documents in their possession regarding the COVID-19 vaccines. We want people to follow the science, and this is the science from the actual trial. The Board has told us that they are against misinformation, so the Board should update their resolution every time new science is revealed, so the public is educated, and we can ensure that the public are as safe as possible for topics surrounding the COVID-19 vaccine, for truly informed decision-making for them and their families. For example, there are a few things that have come to light. One, Pfizer's COVID vaccine, excuse me, was not 95% effective as they claimed. The data shows only a 12% efficacy rate for the first seven days, and then it falls to less than 1%. Two, there were no human clinical trials to determine if the experimental COVID vaccines were safe for pregnant women. They were excluded from all the trials. Instead, they tested it on 44 rats before claiming it was safe. Additionally, every person that worked on that trial was an employee of Pfizer or Biontech or held stock in the company. This is published in the report. Three, the lipid nanoparticles were found to have distributed throughout the body in the liver, ovaries, and other vital organs 48 hours post-injection. Four, within the first three months of the COVID vaccine becoming initially available to the public in December 2020 through February 2021, Pfizer and the FDA knew that the vaccine was associated with at least 1,200 deaths and has a higher than a 3% mortality rate. We know how much this Board cares about this community, or they would not have previously passed this misinformation resolution. You have the duty to the public to update the resolution with this new information. And we request that the Board and the public find out more about the Pfizer documents from the website icandecide.org. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, caller. Appreciate your comments. Okay, next caller, please.
Next call, please. I think this is your last caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Rachel Catan, and in light of the previous comment made by Debbie regarding what is known by Pfizer and the FDA, we request that the COVID-19 county dashboard be updated to link over to the released Pfizer documents. Thank you.
Thank you, caller.
I'm having trouble hearing.
We can try to turn it up, but we're experiencing some technical difficulties, and it's, I just want to say it for the record, there's nothing I can do on my end. It's something that's going on in the backend, and I believe Metro Cable and Department of Technology is working on it. So, I wanted to hit that up button too for you, because I can hardly hear, so.
Yeah. Well, thank you. It's pretty clear in here in the chambers, but it is on some of the phones, it's a little --
Yeah, we're getting department head callers are texting me and letting me know, and I just want everyone to know we're working on it.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Flo. All right. Any other callers? Again, last call for off-agenda. If not, then we'll go to our agenda, and thank you all for your comments and for weighing in on items of interest this morning. Okay, with that, then let's go to our consent calendar, if we could, Madam Clerk.
Yes, good morning. Now, again, we have Consent Matters, items 2 through 33. A couple of things. For item 4, you're adopting an ordinance of the Sacramento County Code amending sections 5.50.104 and 5.50.112 relating to the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission. You waived reading on this on May 24th. And for item 14, this is a Housing Trust Fund Annual Fee Index Mechanism. You're adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 16.89 of the Sacramento County Code, and you also waived reading on this on May 25th. We do have a couple of other announcements that we'll take at the end.
Very good. Okay, let me go to my colleagues. First, to my right, any items you'd like to pull off? Okay, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Number 13 and number 22.
Okay, please note, items 13 and 22, we'll take in just a moment. Supervisor Aderhold? Okay. Supervisor Serna, any items?
I'm eager to hear Supervisor Kennedy's comments on item 22, because I suspect I might have some similar ones of my own.
All right, so, 2 on 22? Okay. All right, Supervisor Frost? Okay. And I don't have any items as well, so.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and call item 13 first.
Yes, item 13 is the Florin Area LED Streetlights Contract Phase 3. This is the final contract acceptance.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So, on this one, I just wanted to say, you know, when I first started this job, I went to our DOT staff and I said, you know, why is it that we can't get safety and security streetlights in established, particularly older, lower-income neighborhoods where they're needed, you know, very much? And I was told, well, we just don't do that. And, you know, that, to me, was not the right answer, so I'm just here today to say, you know, this is phase 3 in the Florin area to provide LED lighting that wasn't there before and was said couldn't be done, so I wanted to thank, on behalf of the district and myself, DOT staff, and SHRA for getting beyond the, because we've always done it that way, mentality and making this work. You've made a big difference, so thank you.
Great. Good comment.
All right. Item 22 is the approval to establish a new fee structure in line with the revisions set forth in Section 26190 of the California Penal Code for concealed weapons permit processing fees as required by California State Assembly Bill 1297.
Okay, Supervisor Kennedy, and then Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. In the staff report, it was clear at what the current fees are and what the proposed fees are, but what I didn't see, and we have seen in the past, Supervisor Serna and I have had many discussions at the dais over, is that it didn't show what the overall impact is, what the overall cost, annual costs are. So, if we're increasing these fees, what type of revenue are we? And I know it's projections, but based upon past history, we could probably be pretty close with our projections. So, I'd like to know what the annual impacts are of these revenue enhancements.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. So, Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive of Public Safety and Justice Agency, and Lieutenant Shelley Hotchkins from the Sheriff's Office is here to be able to answer some of these questions. I will say, if you don't mind, Lieutenant coming up toward the podium. They have been tracking over the last three years what the actual costs are and the revenue offsets. The actual costs are between $600,000 and $900,000, and then the revenue over the past few years is between $400,000 and $700,000. With this new change in fees, the gap is closing in ensuring that actual costs are covered. So, for example, new application permits for CCWs, these new fees will cover those costs completely, and then I think the lieutenant might be able to answer any more detailed questions about that.
I guess I'll be very specific, so that you -- and I'm looking for the delta between what currently we are paying and what we are going to be paying, which sounds like zero. So, what's that delta projected to be? We being the county.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you for inviting us here to address some of these issues. I'm actually going to defer that question to Jennifer Griffin, who did the studies and the fee structuring with the unit.
Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning, Board. Jennifer Griffin, Senior Accounting Manager with the Sheriff's Office. So, we looked at the last three years. Our cost is not going to change, however, the revenue will. The full cost recovery is a target we won't be able to hit. We can do that for the application fees, but we're limited with the renewal fees and the modification fees by the penal code. There's a base fee of 25 for the renewal fees and 10 for the modification fees, and from there, we can only increase those amounts by the CPI each year. So, the average expenditures are $777,000 over the last three years. The average revenue was $496,988, which was an average net county cost of $280,274. So, by increasing these fees, we expect to be able to bring in an average of about another $125,000 a year to help offset those costs.
So, we're still paying $155,000 or change, whatever?
Yeah, there would still be probably around.
So, why, so if we, if the others are statutorily limited, but the application fee isn't, why don't we just up the application fee so that this is complete cost recovery?
I suppose we could do that. We did our study based off of actual cost, and we did a time study on what time that was dedicated to new applications versus renewal fees, and then we used that percentage of time split to calculate the cost for each of the processes. The application process is a little bit more detailed, because it's the first time around.
Okay, I have more.
That is something we could revisit. We were trying to take the portion that we actually spend on application, the application process, and come up with a per-application price based on actual cost.
Okay, I have more comment, but I'd be interested to see what my colleague has to say.
No, I think, thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. I think we're thinking along the same lines here. My position has been clear in the past, as has Supervisor Kennedy's, in terms of our concern about the net county cost that is associated with what I believe to be a fairly aggressive CCW policy by this particular sheriff, and I really have no interest in seeing any of our general fund being used to administer it when the sheriff has intent on distributing not hundreds but thousands of these permits. So, if we're being asked today to adopt these fees, albeit no vote because of the answer that you just gave to Mr. Kennedy about only a portion of the cost being claimed against these fees, so until I have a reasonable comfort level that our general fund is going to be protected, so to speak, from the use of, you know, in terms of using our general funds for this processing and administration of these applications, I'm going to be a no vote.
Okay. If I could, I just wanted to ask a question, because I know we have a number of fee structures where we, you know, certainly in those that are fee-supported, non-general fund departments, we require full recovery. I can think about environmental management, for example. I would just say, what the information you presented today, though, certainly was useful. I guess I'm kind of curious, Debbie, or you, why wasn't that included in the staff report? All we have is analysis that shows the charts about how you did the time studies and so forth, but there was no background that related to, and there have been conversations at this board and some divided votes about going forward with, again, I think, you know, there are issues certainly related to cost recovery, then people may have other philosophical issues relative to, you know, the administration of the CCW program and so forth, but be that as it may, I do think what you've offered needs to be included in the staff report, because again, it's now a matter of record, and irrespective of what this board decides to do or not to do with the fees, I think that's important. I mean, that was information that was absent, and I think it's relevant, and again, it's not being a critical of your analysis, but I just, that needed to be, if we can have a full staff report on this, recognizing the, I think, robust discussion this board's had at times regarding that, I think it's important, certainly going forward to include that, and it may be that whatever we do here either gets us to full cost recovery or not, but I think for the future, that's probably a future reference, would be very important in the event that we're going to have some revisiting of fees over time, which I trust we will now with the change in the law. I can understand, obviously, if you're limited with CPI on either renewals or modifications, but I think even having some understanding what that number is, because if you're $280,000 difference, and you're making up with this proposal $125,000 of that, that still leaves difference, and you're making up with this proposal $125,000 of that, that still leaves about $155,000 that, I guess, would be attributed to renewals or modifications where you're prohibited or limited by the law. So maybe some information behind that would be useful, too, because again, that would say to me that there's a lot of applications that are, you know, only bringing in X, and I don't know if it's in the hundreds or thousands, but at $155,000, still a difference here. Again, I would just say I'm prepared to support the increases, but I think in light of the discussion here that we probably need a little more information, maybe to see what the, you know... And again, there are that many modifications or renewals, then to have some understanding. Again, I certainly wouldn't want to unfairly try to collect costs, but if we have a program, sometimes we do that. We have to look at within the framework of allocation of fees, and, you know, the time studies may show that it only takes X, but in order to cover the full cost, and if the board's intent to have full cost recovery in this program, that hasn't been a policy decision at this juncture yet, but it's kind of what's before us this morning. So I don't know, is there any other responses you wanted to offer? And I don't... I'm sorry, I see both Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Desmond that are punched up here, but before I turn to them, was there anything you want to respond to on previous comments before I go to...
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for your comment. We can definitely include that in the future, and we can go back and revisit what a full cost recovery would look like as well, if that's the board's wish.
Okay, thanks, Debbie. Okay, Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. Just to see what Supervisor Desmond has to say, but in the meantime, I think in light of the conversation that we've had today and the information that has come to light, I'd like to pull this separately, and I'd like to vote for a continuance.
Okay, all right. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and appreciate the discussion. Thank you for being here today, and I would agree with Supervisor Kennedy if that is a motion to pull it and continue the item. I, too, just to piggyback on Supervisor Natale's comments, certainly support the fee increase, but I think that is a discussion, you know, being new to this discussion, I know this has been going on for a long time. I do think just intuitively, we should look at a fee structure that is, does not impact, certainly the general fund is not subsidized by the general fund. I mean, that makes sense in this context, as it does in so many other contexts. So I would also support coming back with a little more information about what it would take to close that gap. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments by board members? And I understand we have a motion, I think I heard a second, then to continue the item. Is that something you think, Lieutenant and Deputy County Executive, could be back? If we put this over for a week, is that too short a timeframe? Again, I don't know when renewals and applications, how quickly they're processed, and so, I mean, while we have this pending, there's some loss of revenue, but I don't know, you know, how fast these are processed and so forth. So I just, is there... Or would it be better to put this over till July? I mean, we're going to be out of session for three weeks after next week, so...
We can make that work next week.
You think so? Okay, all right, so we get... Anne, do you agree with that? Okay. All right, well, because I think this is a budgetary item, and certainly as we're looking at fiscal year budgets, I think it's important. So is that okay with the makers of the motion, the second, that we would continue this? Preference on days, Madam Clerk?
June 14th.
June 14th, okay. So do we have any speakers on this item?
We do not have any speakers on this item.
Okay. All right, then, motion made in second to continue this one week till June 14th, and it will be a separate item, so it won't be a consent item, and we'll have additional staff work behind it. So, all right, that's the motion. If there's nothing further, please vote.
Can you just hang on one second? I'm asking my staff to confirm. There was a caller that came in for item two, and I highly doubt that they were calling for claims, being that this is close to 22. I just want to double check before you vote.
Okay.
Can I make an announcement? We have department heads who call in on the Skype line, and we've asked repeatedly for someone to mute their phones. I can't unmute the phone so that department heads can address the board because someone's phone is unmuted. So my recourse is going to be to hang up that line and start a whole new line. It's very imperative that we allow the department heads to participate in the meeting. Okay, so they were calling for tomorrow's item, so now you can vote.
Okay. All right, then please vote. Continuing.
Okay, unanimous vote. This is continued to June 14th.
Okay, very good. Thank you for both of being here. We'll see you back next week. Okay, good, thanks. All right. Any other consent items then? Those were the only ones that were called out, and if not, then we'll go to the motion on the balance of consent counter.
Yes.
I'll move the balance in a second.
All right, it's been moved in a second to approve the balance of the consent counter. If nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote with the exception of item 22, which was continued to June 14th.
Very good. Okay, I know we're going to go back to a couple items that were just taken up. I know to our County Executive, who on items, I believe, items five and six, wishes to make some comments, so Anne, we'll start with item five.
Yes, we'll start with five. Do we need to read that into the record?
Sure, we can do that.
Item five is the authorization to appoint Siobhan Kathari as Deputy County Executive of Social Services.
Okay.
Thank you. I am so pleased to be bringing this recommendation to you today to appoint Siobhan Kathari as the Deputy County Executive for Social Services. We did an extensive nationwide recruitment. We did extensive outreach in the community with both internal and external stakeholders, and Ms. Kathari has 20 years of social service executive leadership experience. She has actually run or managed almost all of the programs that lie under the Social Services Agency in other jurisdictions. She's done an outstanding job in the last year, leading the Department of Health Services. I feel very fortunate that she applied and accepted this position, and she was the best candidate, so I'm really happy and glad that Ms. Kathari is here.
Great. Siobhan, you want to come forward?
Good morning, Siobhan. Good morning. Thank you so much. I just wanted to say a few words, if I can.
Sure.
I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the board and your staff, to thank our CEO Anne Edwards and our Deputy CEO Bruce Wagstaff for their confidence in me and leading your Health Services Agency over the last year. I have been extremely fortunate to have inherited an incredible team, an incredible staff in Health Services. And we all know that when a leader shines, it's really because of the team that's doing the work on the ground. And so I really did want to thank my team for all of their work, and not only my current team, but my teams of the past, too, that have really taught me and pushed me and helped me to become a better leader because of them. I also wanted to just take the opportunity to say that I recognize I am going to be trying to fill very big shoes, both literally and figuratively. Bruce has much bigger shoes than I do, and I recognize that Bruce's wisdom, his experience, his guidance, his support and mentorship are unparalleled, and I will do my best to fill those shoes on your behalf and continue your vision and building the programs that he has done so adeptly over the last several years. I also know that the department heads here, who you've helped to choose for our county, not just in the Social Services Agency, but the county at large, it's an incredible team of department heads that come together and collaborate effectively, and there's so much exciting work going on right now on culture and DEI, the work that we're going to do collectively on your behalf to create greater impacts in the community. And then finally, I just wanted to say thank you to my family, to my parents who did support me and were my biggest cheerleaders over the years, to get me where I'm going and give me those life experiences, and to my chosen family, and especially my 15-year-old son Tyo, who reminds me every day why this work is so important and why the decisions we make on creating programs and on building new strategies for the community are really going to impact this next generation. And he and his friends give me such hope that we're going to have the next generation of leaders who's really going to take this work and launch it to the next level. So once again, thank you, Anne, thank you, Board, for this opportunity. I look forward to continuing the work on your behalf.
Thanks, Siobhan. Well, don't go away. Got a full lineup here. Everybody's in the queue, and so we'll say hi to Mom and Dad and Tyo once again, and I'm going to turn to my colleagues, got Supervisor Desmond, Kennedy, Frost, Serna, and Natale. So you got all five. So we'll start with Supervisor Desmond. Go ahead.
Thank you, Siobhan. I actually queued up first on this one. Usually, I like to hear from my colleagues who've been here a lot longer and kind of piggyback off them, but... So congratulations. I am just thrilled for you, thrilled for the county, and thrilled for the people that we all represent that you're in this position. And want to thank you just specifically, you've spent a lot of time, you know, educating me, and that will continue. Your dedication to solving these complex issues that we face in our social services and behavioral health and everything that you're going to be tackling. I think you are the right person for the job, and I just look forward to continuing to work with you. And you're right, you have terrific department heads who are all as dedicated as you are, so thank you for that. And in terms of the shoes you'll be filling, I know we'll be having more discussions about that, so I'll be excited about commenting on that at a separate day, but congratulations, Siobhan.
Great. Siobhan, so first of all, I want to say that Bruce and I both know, and you should have a caution... This is a cautionary tale, that words like wisdom and experience are code for the dude is old.
Out of order.
Right. You're right, out of order. Be nice.
No, I echo what Supervisor Desmond said. I've had an opportunity to work with you quite a bit because of everything that's been going on when it comes to CalAim and the Health Authority and all of that, and you have been a steadying voice in what could be a very difficult conversation many, many times. You always bring to it not just a calm demeanor, but, you know, you always have the answers. You know, you do your homework, you know this stuff, and so I can't think of a better person to be filling this position, and kudos to Anne for recognizing that, so thank you.
Great, thanks, better.
Hi, Siobhan. I just want you to know that it's been a pleasure to work with you over the last year. I want to especially thank Bruce Wagstaff for coming back out of retirement to help the county during a very difficult time. Bruce, I know institutional knowledge is important, and I think it was a huge benefit to us to have your knowledge over time, and also for Siobhan to be able to spend that time with you and during a time that was very, sometimes, difficult. But, Siobhan, I want to thank you for being a responder, for your respectful demeanor, for your professionalism. You are the right... I think you are the right person for this position, and I'm grateful that you're willing to take that leadership role for the county, and I wish you all the best and look forward to your next, you know, journey, but also look forward to seeing who's going to fill your shoes. So hopefully, that right person will be in place, and I thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, too, will pile on a bit here, Siobhan, and thank you first and foremost for your dedication to the position that you've held and the professionalism that you exhibit on a daily basis is really remarkable. As someone that's served on this board for almost a dozen years now, that hasn't always been the case, quite frankly, working with some. And as the Chair of the Board back in 2020, with the onset of the pandemic and with kind of the chaotic theme of that year, looking back now and reflecting on where we've come, certainly with many of the additions to our professional staff and our executive team, you have really shined. And one of the things that I really appreciate the most is your thoroughness and your willingness to actually get in the weeds and be responsive in terms of answering our questions when we have them, whether it be in the setting or one-on-one. That is incredibly helpful. We can't make informed decisions without good information, and you're a purveyor of that information oftentimes when it comes to things as important as the public's health. So really do appreciate all you have done and look forward to working with you in your new capacity.
Thanks, Phil. Well, Siobhan, I would certainly echo much, if not all, what's been said here, and just to offer my congratulations, in addition to that's already been offered. Again, I think my experience in having worked with you now for the time you've been with the county is that much of what's been said here relates to your willingness to, you know, roll up your sleeves and really, you know, get to the task at hand, but I think, you know, bringing, obviously, the capacity to draw upon the experience of others, but also that which you bring. I think you've certainly demonstrated, at least in my view, that you work on behalf of the people of this county, as we all do, and that, you know, even though you may not say that, that your actions, your words, your follow-through, I think, really demonstrate that, and it's really important. Again, you know, whether we're elected officials, we're in the administration, or at line level of providing service in this county to all the people, and oftentimes, the folks that, you know, services that you will oversee and have are for folks who have a much smaller voice oftentimes, or no voice at all, because the system is big, it can be overwhelming, and yet, by design, it's supposed to be readily available to help people in need. And sometimes, kind of cutting down through that requires certainly leadership, it requires some intuition and some hard work, and I think you've certainly demonstrated that in many ways, and I could cite those, but that's not necessary this morning, and I would just want to offer my congratulations to you. And I think sometimes, too, it's important, as you acknowledge your family, you know, that sometimes the professional commitment draws away time from family, and that can be, you know, work a hardship, but, you know, trying to achieve that balance and yet stay true to your work, but true to your family, and those things that are most important to all of us, you know, can be a struggle, but you seem to manage it well, and one of your expressions, you often say lift folks up. You do that through your actions and your words, and so I congratulate you, and this is a special day, and obviously, you're already in the trenches, and you'll pick it up, and we'll have a chance to recognize Bruce here in the next week or so, but again, I think you've had, you know, strong collegial support. Now you're the leader, and you're ready for the job, so congratulations to you.
Thank you so much, Supervisors.
You bet. Okay, good, all right. Okay, and with that, congratulations, Siobhan, and so now we have item number six. If you want to read that into the record, we have another appointment.
Yes, I'm happy to. Authorization to appoint Amanda Benson as public defender.
Very good. Okay, Anne.
So this is a great day because we are appointing two very talented department head, deputy county executives, so I am thrilled to bring Amanda Benson's appointment to public defender before you. Again, as we did with Ms. Kathari's position, we did extensive outreach to all of our partners in the criminal justice field and others. We did significant outreach to the department. Mr. Jones did listening sessions with staff from the public defender's office to, you know, hear about what they were looking for in a new public defender, and I think we've made a very good choice. Ms. Benson has over 20 years of experience. She's a seasoned trial attorney. She also has extensive management and leadership experience, and from the feedback that we received, I think that she is going to be able to provide some healing for the public defender's office and bring everybody together, and so I am more than happy to congratulate Ms. Benson as the new public defender and invite her to come up and say a few words.
Great, thank you, Anne. Good morning, Amanda.
Good morning. Thank you. Siobhan is a very tough act to follow, but I'll do my best. I'm deeply honored to be here today and for the trust that you have in me to appoint me to be the public defender. I want to thank, of course, County Executive Anne Edwards for her trust and faith in me as well, and I've had the privilege over the last year to work with both Bruce Wagstaff and Eric Jones. They've been very helpful, very... They've provided a lot of guidance this last eight months, serving as interim. I've learned a tremendous amount about leadership, and I want to thank my staff of... I have a dedicated staff of attorneys, investigators, social workers, support staff, many of whom are here today to support me. I wouldn't be here today without their support. It's true that our office is in the process of healing. These last few years have been incredibly challenging for us, but I know that with the team... But I know that with the team that I have and the support that I have from the Executive's Office, we will continue to heal and we will make the changes needed for our office to grow and to prosper. I love this job. I love this community. I love our clients and my staff. And it is an absolute privilege and joy to come to work every day and to be able to do this job where I get to lead people who are so dedicated to this duty that we have under the Constitution, to champion the rights of the accused and to advocate for some of the most vulnerable in our community. And so I will continue to fight every day for this office and for our clients. I also just want to thank my family as well, my husband and my children, who have been absolutely supportive during this past year. I wouldn't be here today if it were not for them as well. And again, thank you to all of you for your support. I have not had the privilege of appearing before you and working with you as closely as Siobhan. But when I have been here, I've very much appreciated the respectful questions and the interest in our department and the support for our department. So without that, I guess those are my closing remarks. Thank you so much.
Great. Thanks, Amanda. We have a couple of members of the Board. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. Let me just brief. I just want to say, Amanda, that really, recognition of challenges is going to be the first step toward making change and innovation. And so I really applaud you for that. And as someone who has practiced criminal defense work myself, I have tremendous respect for what you all do. You and your department is just as important as any one of the spokes in the Wheel of Justice in Sacramento County. And I think you recognize that, and I hope that your staff recognizes that.
Thank you. We do.
Great. Supervisor Desmond?
Yes, thank you. And Amanda, I just want to also congratulate you. And you and I have not had a chance to meet one-on-one yet, but I look forward to doing that. And I echo the sentiments of Supervisor Kennedy in the importance of the work you do, and thank you for it. And thank your team, some of whom I know, but I think it speaks volumes that they are here as well with you today in chambers. That means a lot. And I just want to say, I'm just, the work that you have brought to this Board, the diversionary work that you're doing, pretrial diversionary work you're doing, is just so admirable. And I know, I'm certain this Board will continue to support that work. And what's impressive to me is your relationship with the other partners you have here in Sacramento County, because that relationship is also crucial as well. And so I look forward to maybe getting something on the calendar and sitting down and talking with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Frost?
Thank you, Chair. So I too want to congratulate you, Amanda, on being selected our Public Defender. Won't repeat some of the comments already that have been made, but suffice it to say that it is an extremely difficult position. I think it's often an overlooked position in the whole scheme of criminal justice. I don't think the public or the media necessarily pay as much attention, quite frankly, to that part of the justice equation, that is, defense of the accused. And you're absolutely right. It's a constitutionally protected service and one that should not be taken lightly. And we need to have very experienced people doing the job that you and your team are doing. And then lastly, I just want to make an observation as the supervisor that led the charge on the Sacramento Women's and Girls Commission. I have to say, it's very refreshing to see Ann's executive team being led by some extremely capable women for change here in Sacramento County.
Thank you. I agree.
Supervisor Frost?
Congratulations, Amanda. I haven't met you personally. I know you have your challenges cut out for you. What I also know is that the County Executive, Ann Edwards, when she is out recruiting that right particular leader for a position, she always seems to do it for all the right reasons. And that gives me confidence that you're the right person for this job and that you'll do well. So I want to congratulate you, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost.
Another five of five. You got some comments here. I just want to, again, offer my congratulations to you, Amanda, and certainly seeing the members of your team here. That's a very, very good sign. And again, having served for the years that I have on this Board, I've seen some of the ups and downs, the challenges certainly the county's gone through, but certainly am familiar, obviously, with challenges in some of our departments and so forth. But I think keeping focus on providing those very, very important services, in this case, obviously, defense for folks who are accused, and working with partners within the criminal justice realm to hopefully see that justice is served, but also that folks hopefully can heal, not just as you've talked about, Ann said, with the Office. And part of that is having folks who are motivated, feel supported, and certainly understand the importance of their role, but also feel supported in the organization. And that starts, obviously, with the leadership at the department level, certainly the leadership at the County Executive level, and certainly with this Board and the community we represent. But it's very, very important work. It's hard work, oftentimes maybe underappreciated. But I know you have an appreciation for it, and I think, obviously, you're the person who's up to the task. So again, I haven't had a chance to work with you directly. We've talked a few times on the phone and different issues. But I really appreciate your dedication, and I think the role that you're in is obviously very pivotal. And I know that you will, I think, make us all proud in your work, and congratulations to you and wish you well.
Thank you very much.
You bet. All right, very good. Congratulations. Again, thanks all for being here, those that are here to recognize and support our two most recent appointees. And again, congratulations to Ann as she continues to rebuild and build her team. So, all right. Were there anything else before we get into our timed items?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. And thanks to the folks behind the scenes on the, working on the technical aspects of this. I know that Flo and her staff, but also our IT and certainly our Metro Cable folks have been working to make the necessary adjustments. Okay, with that, then let's go to our first hearing item of the morning.
All right, item 34. This is a public hearing on development impact fee program updates for the Arcade Creek, Carmichael, Fair Oaks, Mission Oaks, North Highlands, Orangeville, Rio Linda, Alberta, and Sunrise Recreation and Park Districts. Approve the updated fee nexus studies and the environmental determination is exempt.
Okay, very good. All right.
Good morning, members of the Board and Chair Natoli. And by having such a long subject ladder, it gives you time to walk down here. Good morning again. The impact fees for the eight park districts, as read into the record by Ms. Evans, were first established in 2010. Today, we bring for your approval updated nexus studies, which contain current construction costs and updated dwelling unit occupancy or per person for household factors. All of these nexus studies actually provide reductions in five out of the eight districts in the single-family residential rate, and all residential, excuse me, non-residential rates have been decreased due to the application of a non-resident employee factor. These nexus studies are consistent with an agreement in principle that was established back in 2010 with the development community and with the North State Building Industry Association. There's been some recent communication with the BIA regarding some of the items in the nexus studies, one of them being the use of a higher park level of service than what is currently provided within the districts, and also the example of the city of Sacramento lowering, recently lowering their park fees. And that was done, that was achieved by, again, lowering the level of service. These are examples that are not consistent with the district master plans nor with county general policies regarding new development. And lastly, as shown in the board letter, there's various tables and data that show that these proposed fees do not adversely impact residential housing feasibility. With that, actually, in either remotely or in chambers today, we have various district, park district administrators and general managers. They'll be happy to answer any questions you have, along with Mr. Blair Osso with the SCI Consulting Group, to answer any other questions you may have. With that, that concludes our staff presentation, and we're happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thanks, Dorothy. We do have a supervisor in the queue, but I just wanted to be clear, though. I have one member of the audience signed up to speak on this item. So if some of the parks administrators or others that are interested want to speak to item 34, please get a speaker for him. Maybe just want to be available for questions, but I just wanted to be clear about that, that there, you said the folks are in the audience, but I only have one person actually signed up to speak, who actually submitted written comments, and we'll call upon that person and others in a moment. So let me go to members of the Board for questions. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. I'll aim this at Mr. DeFante, because we've had a discussion about this, and you were going to do some looking into the issue. In the next item, we have bifurcated the issue of the nexus study and the fee increases or fees. Obviously, we need to act on the nexus study because of the state law has a ticking clock, but the fees don't necessarily. Is it possible for us to bifurcate at this time and just address the nexus study today and address the fees at a later time?
It is, yes. So you could, and we would certainly recommend that you do act on the nexus study today for the reasons you just mentioned, but should you want staff to do more work on the fees themselves, bifurcating in that fashion would allow us some time to do just that. We would ask, though, if there's any board direction along those lines as to how you would want us to work with the park districts, to consider other fees, fee amounts, et cetera, that that direction be provided, so we have a bit of guidance there.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow on before, Supervisor Desmond, if I understood Dorothy correctly from the staff report and from your verbal report this morning, there was a process, and again, I have some recollection of this. It was certainly in working in concert with all the districts, that we had a conversation just a few months ago about one of the districts that has some of the new growth areas, but these are, by what you've at least put on the agenda here, infill districts, ones that don't have large growth areas, some that have some opportunity for growth, but a lot of opportunity for infill. So the agreements that were struck is the foundation for what you bring us today, they are based in the 2010 studies and then some follow-on, it was a couple of years later, is that? There were master plans that had to coincide with what the determinations back in 2010.
And actually, I'll have any of the other district administrators or Mr. Davison fix the details. However, my understanding is in 2010, when the fees were first established, concurrently, the agreement in principle was prepared and a result of numerous discussions with the development community. Since then, I believe the park districts have approved master plans, which kind of bring them up to current. And again, actually, I'm not sure if I'm addressing your questions. However, it's kind of an iterative process and a dynamic process to bring us to today in the updated fees.
Okay. But in 2010, that's what came before the Board of Supervisors, for the adoption, and that was adopted by this body at that time.
Yes.
And then subsequent to that, if I understand you correctly, then master plans are updated from time to time, that there may have been master plan updates that either were consistent or maybe reflect, I say that they should be consistent with, obviously, what was adopted by the Board at the time, and I assume by the Boards that, and they're all elected boards, I think, with the exception of one that's a dependent district, it's an appointed board. So they're all elected boards that represent those districts. Their actions subsequent to 2010, though, have reflected updates to their master plans. Is that what you said?
Yes, and I'm not sure.
But consistent with what was?
With the agreement in principle, correct.
The agreement in principle, okay.
Yes, yes.
And that's what's reflected before us today, is that accurate?
Yes, the nexus studies, which are concurrent with the, consistent with the master plans, are also consistent with the agreement in principle.
Okay. And one last question on this part. So, and the master plans are subject to public hearings, public comments, and require adoptions by the respective elected bodies and/or certainly the governing bodies for all those districts. Is that accurate?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thanks. All right, Supervisor Desmond, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Dorothy. Actually, look at the list here, out of these eight park districts, I believe, three out of the eight are actually dependent districts.
Correct, yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
I think four and a half of them are in District Three, my district, so I'm very familiar with these park districts and the challenges they face. And I appreciate Supervisor Kennedy asking the question about possibly bifurcating it. Dave, you and I had a similar discussion yesterday. And I do have some questions about some of the fees here, but wanted to make sure we can still move forward with part of this, if that's the will of the Board, and then continuing a discussion about some of the specific amounts in this fee structure, because there are some outliers here. I'm very interested to hear from, I know we have some park district representatives, several out in the audience and assuming on the phone as well, but just as a general principle for me, is, you know, being very familiar with most of these park districts and the parks, and having used many, many of these parks, we want to strike the right balance, certainly, between attracting infill development in these areas, which I desperately want, and I know so many of us desperately want, while also making sure we have quality parks. And if, our measurement should not be the quality of the parks as they exist today, because a lot of these parks were built when there wasn't as much attention paid to the need for outdoor amenities for communities, especially struggling communities, in a lot, that a lot of these park districts represent. So those are just some of my comments, and look forward to hearing the public comment about this.
Okay. So Supervisor Frost?
Yeah, I'm struggling with this. I've had several conversations, and also thank you for the meeting with me on this. The idea of delivering the five acres per 1,000 people in our master plan, there's the, you know, it's been suggested to me that it isn't necessarily possible to do that, that all the parks can't do that. And I know infill in some areas is not really, they don't, like in Orangeville, they don't have a lot of infill, because, you know, it's just a community that doesn't have a lot of development. But when they do and they get those fees, they utilize those fees for improving facilities or improving other parks. And so I think, how do you rational, how do we rationalize in our master plan that metric of, you know, five acres per 1,000 people? And is there a conversation to be had around how we look at that? How we look at whether or not we're delivering for the amount that we're charging in fees, I guess, is the question. I don't know if I'm saying it very well.
That's fine. And again, too, as necessary, I'll defer to the district administrators. However, the determination has been made that within the new development areas within their districts, that the five acres per thousand can be delivered as far as having that be the basis for the development, for new development in their districts, and therefore the commensurate fee would be applicable.
Okay, so even, so if they, I mean, I'm hearing that it's not necessarily the case. So I'll look forward to hearing from the park districts and maybe others who are having this conversation also. And I'm in agreement that if we can separate out and, you know, at least, at very least, vote on the nexus study, then continue the conversation if necessary.
Thank you.
Okay. Dorothy, I wanted to ask a question, because again, we're going to hear from folks here in a moment, but looking at the chart that's included in the staff report, that in a number of cases, the fees are actually going down.
Absolutely.
You know, so we're going to have a beef here about, you know, calculations for five acres per thousand. But when it comes to the single-family category, that in actuality, and then some of the, and yeah, there's an outlier here, I get it, and we can have some explanation behind that, but the fees are actually going down.
Yes.
From what they've been adopted. And so, I mean, I guess a point that shouldn't be lost to anybody at this Board, that the districts that we rely on, that the people that they represent and their administration of the fees, granted, we're given this, you know, the overarching responsibility here, but the fees are going down. Now, there is an exception to that, and we can have some more discussion around that, but I just, I find it odd, coming off the conversation we had about Cordova Recreation and Park District just a few months ago, and obviously, determination by this Board on how we wanted to act on that, that we're back here talking about five acres per thousand, that's outlined, and certainly in the Quimby Act, that we've got fee reductions in a lot of cases, in multiple categories in some cases, and yet we're having a debate about fees being too high. categories in some cases, and yet we're having a debate about fees being too high. And I don't know how anybody with inflation or the cost of developing sites, just for materials, let alone for the aesthetics, for the quality of life, and fees are going down, and we're having to argue about whether we ought to do this? I just think that's a little bit ironic. So anyway, do we have any other questions? All right, Dorothy, stand by, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
No district administrator signed up to speak on this? I have Mr. Norm on behalf of the Building Industry Association who's here, but does any district administrator want to address anything, or you want to listen to the testimony and I guess be available for questions, but?
Thank you. I believe that was part of the intent, was that they would speak as needed. Thank you.
All right. Chris, you're up. Mr. Norm, and he's the only one I have signed to speak on this, by the way, so.
Good morning.
Yeah, we raised it up a little bit, and we did get your written communication, by the way, too. Thank you.
Interactive here. Good morning, Chair Natoli, members of the board, Chris Norm, North State Building Industry Association. Let me start by just saying that we appreciate, you know, parks, their value to the community, really respect the work that the consultant has done, the staff has done. Wanted to, you know, make sure we just brought to your attention some of the issues in this, and take your point, well, Mr. Natoli, about the, you know, lowering of the fees. Intention of my letter was mainly to bring your attention the differences in reality of what's been actually accomplished under the master plans and, I guess, the agreement that was placed in principle, or it's in the general plan from 15 years ago to try to get to five acres per thousand. I would take issue, I guess just respectfully disagree with Ms. Gattani's remark that the master plans do not say that they're going to actually get to five acres per thousand. Actually, I have a printout right here with me of the Arden Park District where it actually says the opposite. It actually says, "We're all built out, and we actually have no plan to actually add acres." It shows for the next 10 years, we will not achieve that acreage level. So legally, just because it's in the master plan, it's in your general plan, it's your goal, you can try to charge for that five acres per thousand, even though the reality is that you're not achieving that. So our concern is simply that if you're a new homeowner, you're paying for park level of service that you'll never actually get. Some of the park districts will show that they're going to have joint use agreements with schools, colleges, the city, and that's how they'll achieve the five acres per thousand. It's important to understand that they're not contemplating, or at least doesn't say in the master plan, that they're going to be using fees from development to actually manage those lands or to have that access to that. So at the core of this issue is, are people who are being charged for five acres per thousand actually having their funds used in the achievement of that goal? And it doesn't appear from the master plans that that's actually happening. So I think that, you know, with due respect to the process, this is a, this is a policy that the board put in place many years ago, so it's really a board question. Is this, would we want to continue to try to achieve this or charge for this, given the track record of where, what we've been able to do? Acting in good faith or trying to provide the best parks possible. It may not be possible in the infill areas to do that. So it's a question for the board of, you know, how much do you want to charge, and is that reasonable? So I think that's all my points were. I also mentioned that, you know, the city of Sacramento, in an effort to recognize this challenge, as well as the fact that they wanted to spur infill development, actually lowered their park acreage requirements. In the areas in the city abutting your jurisdictions, it's 3.5 acres per thousand. In the dense infill areas downtown, it's one or 1.5 acres per thousand. So you have other jurisdictions that have, in these areas, recognized the difficulty of trying to acquire that land, also wanting to incentivize infill, who have taken policy positions to try to address that. And we're thinking that we want to put that in front of you. Sorry, I'm over my time. We want to put that before you so that you are clear about what those decisions are, so you can act in accordance with your overall policy parameters and objectives. So thank you very much for your time.
Great.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks, Chris.
And happy to answer any other questions. Thanks.
Any questions for Ms. Norm? Okay, no question. Thank you, Chris. All right, I have no one else sign up to speak. I don't know if there's any other questions of staff. I've heard the suggestion that we bifurcate the item here today, and I guess I'll turn to my colleagues for comments.
Chairperson Natoli, we do have someone on the phone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we do. Okay, we do have somebody on the line. Very good.
Can you transfer the call, Ophelia? Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes. Caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, go ahead and start with your comments. You have three minutes, please.
Yes, hello. My name is Barry Ross. I'm the district administrator for Orangeville Recreation and Park District. Just mostly just here in case you have questions, but in Orangeville, we do have roughly five acres per thousand. We do have about five acres per thousand people, and we are, these fees are extremely valuable to us, these park impact fees. As we have more population, it's important for us to update our facilities, add on to facilities, and make them available to our public. So it's, it's all a very important part of our overall budget and our master plan to create and maintain our park facilities and add to parkland. In 2019, Orangeville Recreation and Park District did purchase some land. There was a church that was for sale, and we purchased it, and that added nearly five acres to our district. And we've been using park impact fees to make improvements upon that property. So having, having the fees available to us, even if we don't use them right away, they're there for a purpose, and the purpose is for our master plan and to develop future master plan projects. I'll hold if there's any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Appreciate you weighing in. Any questions for Mr. Ross? Okay, thank you, Barry.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other callers?
No, that's it.
Okay, so that's all of our callers, all of our commenters. Unless someone else wants to address the board. So I have Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Desmond in the queue.
I just want to go on record as saying that I think the parks are really important in our community. They add to our quality of life. And the parks, over the past couple years, have, have really struggled with their budgets because of increasing services that they provided during the pandemic. So I get how important the park impact fees are, and I respect the fact that there may be a need to, you know, have some further conversation regarding those impact fees. But I don't know, I'm not sure that we can compare our parks to Sac City necessarily, and I'm not excited about reducing parks. You know, I'm not sure, I want it to make sense. It needs to, you know, people need to get what they're paying for. So maybe that conversation needs to be had. So I guess when, when the time comes, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the NEXUS study separate and then continue the conversation on the impact fees to ensure that we come back with something that everyone's more happy with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Desmond?
Well, I'll start by saying I'd materially second that, that motion if it's on the floor. But first, I also want to thank the, the park district administrators and board members. I have, I have relationships with several of you and just appreciate the work you do, especially in some of these older, built-out areas. I know you don't have some of the same opportunities, and I know it's a struggle. I, you know, Chris, I appreciate your comments from the BIA, but I mean, like Supervisor Natoli astutely pointed out, in so many situations, the fees are going down. I mean, I would think that would help attract infill development. The reason I support holding over a discussion, to have a little more discussions with, with our own county staff and maybe the park districts about some of these specific fees, and certainly a discussion about the, how you might reach that, that five acre threshold in terms of the partnerships and some other things you're exploring. That's a discussion that I'd like to have. But just again, thank you very much for bringing this forward. I am, I am supportive of this in general. Just have a little more information. I'd like to get a little more discussions. I'd like to have. So that's why I'm going to second the motion, and thank you.
Okay, all right. We have a motion to second, but we have other members of the board, Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll start by agreeing with Chair Natoli in, you know, the importance and values of parks. I mean, I will speak from a personal level. Two years ago, I moved into a house because of the parks in the area. So I think that, you know, the realtors and the home builders, I think they understand that, you know, parks are amenities that help sell houses, so they are important. But at the same time, we always have to weigh, when you get fees so high that you're not building, because it doesn't pencil out, then you have no parks and no fees. So we somehow have to find that sweet spot, and I hope we get there. Staff was looking for some direction. I'm going to, you know, really defer quite a bit to my colleagues whose districts are impacted by these particular park districts. But I will say that the comments by the BIA, I thought was an interesting one in that, you know, where areas where homeowners will never get a level of park that they're already paying for. I think that is an interesting topic to look at, if you, if you want direction from me. I'd like to dive deeper into that and see if that could be remedied somehow, because there does appear to be somewhat of a fairness issue there for home buyers in one area compared to another.
Thank you, Patrick. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Dorothy, you'll recall that when we had our briefing on this, I was skeptical of some of the dwelling occupancy factors.
Correct.
Can you, and I noted, I noticed in the, in the board letter, it's briefly referenced, but could you elaborate a little further in terms of kind of the broad statement here that staff, you know, considered the occupancy factors and concluded they're appropriate? That there really isn't too much more than that, unless there's an attachment I'm missing?
Well, to follow up from the discussion that was during our briefing, you, I know you had particularly cited the North Highlands number and the number that you brought up during our briefing. And upon further review of that, we found that that was a blended number, a blending of a single family and the multifamily, and then therefore, as far as, and again, we verified that with Mr. Ross, as far as the applicability of the particular North Highlands number that resulted in the fee. I'm not sure if there's something more specific you were seeking.
No, that was, that was what I was referring to. I just wanted to hear from you a little bit more in terms of the detail behind it. I still believe that regardless of the blending of the multifamily, single family, that it seems to me that the dwelling occupancy is still somewhat remarkable at close to four. So I know that having in a very distant past life, worked on such issues for the equivalent of the BIA in the Bay Area, always wanted to make sure that we were using the right factors in the computation of something as important as fee loads for residential construction. So that was the purpose of my interest in, in that particular element of it.
Yep, thank you.
Dorothy, no other supervisors in the queue, I think, have spoken. We certainly have a motion. So do we have an idea of how many permits are in process in these respective districts? Do we have any ideas? Are there a ballpark number that are, that are pending? Are there pending subdivisions, areas that are being redeveloped, brownfields? Do you have any idea what
I'm afraid I don't.
the capture would be? And again, because there's no set time to return to the board, I trust, and obviously work with, you know, with members of the board, try to get the questions answered. But do we have any idea?
I know we have that information in our annual reports regarding the number of permits pulled for each one, but off the top of my head, I do not, I would be making it up if I gave you any information at this point.
Because as long as we don't act on the fees, then the current fee stays in place.
Exactly.
It doesn't go down, it doesn't go up. And again, so time, you know, has, is a factor in that. I guess that's my point. That's the point of the question. So I guess, again, I'm certainly in deference to my colleagues whose districts, all of these park districts reside in, I certainly am willing to support. I was prepared to support the staff recommendation here today, and, but I do, again, I would want to comment that I think timeliness to have this return to the board. Obviously, there's a policy discussion embedded in this related to acreage calculation and what others may be doing, and what value is ultimately returned to the, the new homeowner, and certainly want to, you know, encourage folks, one, to build, but to, to, you know, to, you know, populate and repopulate existing areas in our community. On the other hand, and I've heard it said here, there's no disagreement about it, about the importance of parks and those amenities. They need to refresh existing parks to get the value, both for those that live and reside there and those that would be a new homeowner in those areas. And so I guess I would just say to the motion, I think it's important to get this back timely before the board, because whether it's a reduction in the fee or an increase in the fee, and whatever that number ultimately is decided by this board, I think it's important and it's relevant to a construction season. And so, and again, when I look at the amounts that, just lastly, I would just say, I look at the amounts that have been thus far accumulated and certainly spent in some of the areas, and there are some fund balances. But again, I didn't hear questions regarding that. I know Mr. Ross addressed it on the phone, but sometimes you have to accumulate dollars in order to accomplish the projects. And so it may be a matter of years, and if it's a slow go, as, you know, depend upon a lot of different factors, but if you're not having that level of construction, then accumulate those funds. And then, as I had mentioned earlier, I think you begin to lose to inflation, certainly in this, these times, it doesn't keep up with it as well. So I didn't hear this being an issue, but I heard it addressed. I think it's important to recognize that just because monies are charged doesn't mean they're immediately going to improvements, because you're not building, in a lot of cases, new parks. You're, you know, either adding amenities and/or attempting to accomplish projects that reflect a long-term hold. And Orangeville is the example, where they bought land. Now, obviously, they accumulate the money to develop it. But, all right, we have a motion on the floor. Dorothy, yes?
Actually, from a logistical standpoint, because of this, this hearing being noticed, I believe in the past, what we've had to do is open the public hearing and continue it to avoid the advertisement. And also, in order to approve the NEXUS studies today, we have eight resolutions, which actually will require some revision in order to adopt and then move forward at a later date with the, with the fee, with the new proposed fees. And so I guess I wanted to bring that to staff's attention and how we want to address that.
Okay, thanks, Dorothy. Lisa?
Sure. So I think the motion on the floor is to adopt the NEXUS study and continue the adoption of the fees. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that correct?
So in that case, you can make that motion, and the resolution will just be edited to reflect that change if adopted.
Okay, and do we need to continue to a date certain, since we have a public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, so we do need to have it. So there was no date included. I don't know how long it's going to take to accomplish this work, but.
If I may, on a similar item with the fire fee, we're asking in that bifurcated fashion to kick that discussion to July 26. That would provide staff some time to have discussions necessary with both the board as well as the folks in the audience here.
Okay, is that acceptable to make of the motion? Okay, secondor? Okay, all right. So the motion then would be, and thank you for the clarification, Dorothy, and I'll make sure public hearing is open. We've taken public comment. And so the motion then is to act on the NEXUS study, to approve the NEXUS study, to continue the discussion on the, on the fees to July 26. Do we need a set of time for that?
I'd rather not.
You'd rather not? Okay. All right, so we'd rather not, but.
It's legally permissible not to.
Okay. That's the better answer.
Respectfully, I'd rather not.
That's why you guys sit together.
We're quite the team over here.
All right, very good. So that is the motion in the second, and the public hearing will, will remain open. So, all right, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right, very good. Thank you all for your attendance. Thanks for those on the All right. Very good. Thank you all for your attendance. Thanks for those on the phone. Appreciate the information that was shared today and we will back July 26th on this item at a time yet to be determined. So, all right, we'll go to next item, please.
Okay. For item 35, this is the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District Development Impact Fee Program Implementation. The environmental determination is exempt. Request is to approve the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District Capital Fire Facilities Impact Fee Program. Introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 16.152 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code for the establishment of the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District Capital Fire Facilities Impact Fees. Waive reading and continue to July 26th for adoption.
Okay. Thank you Dorothy. Welcome back.
Yes, hello again.
Just like you never left.
Members of, I should have like worn a hat or something to just kind of mix it up for you some. The Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District currently serves a population of 745,000 and began its impact fee collection in 2003. The NEXA study that we bring to your board today for consideration does propose an increase in the commercial rate and that's due to two factors. The use of actual call data rather than a demand factor that was used in the previous NEXA study to determine the proportionate share of the calls for residential and non-residential land uses and an increase in the employee demand factor for commercial uses. The NEXA study uses a plan-based method which requires inventory of both existing and future facilities to support both existing and future development. And this is due to the integrated approach for which the, the fire district provides services to their population. The North State Building Industry Association challenged the inclusion of existing land values in this inventory if it was not a property that the district actually purchased. Upon further review, the district was willing to remove those land values, which they cannot substantiate, and they're currently in the process of reviewing the records for this data. Meanwhile, as we previously mentioned, Assembly Bill 602 would require major changes to the NEXA study if it is not approved before July 1st. Not only would this incur significant costs to the district, but also could possibly increase the single-family fee based off of the assessment of fees on a square footage basis. And so therefore, the approval to your board today is similar as what the, what was ultimately determined with the previous item. And that is requesting approval of the NEXA study, opening and continuing the public hearing to July 26th to consider the revised fees which would be resulting from the exclusion or removal of those existing land costs. The county and district staff would present to the BIA prior to July 26th these updated fees. Meanwhile, this definitely was a team effort to bring this to you and there is no I in team. As far as district representatives, district representation in the audience today, we have Mr. Jeff Frye and Ms. Erin Castleberry and the consultants who worked on the NEXA study, Joe Colgan with Consulting, Colgan Consulting, and via phone, Nicole Kissimmee with MBS. With that, that concludes the staff presentation and we're happy to entertain any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thanks Dorothy. Any questions of Ms. Cudani? I didn't see anyone in the queue. Okay, this is a public hearing. I know we have Jeff and Erin here from the district. So I don't know if, I don't have anyone from the fire district signed up. And I do have Mr. Norm has weighed in. So I'm going to open the public hearing and call Chris Ford. Chris?
Good morning once again. Hello again, Chris Norm, North State BIA. First of all, I just want to start by thanking county staff and the fire district staff for reaching out to us, working with us, hearing us. You know, I think we support the recommendation on where you're going with this today. You know, our issue was simply that at its essence, we didn't feel that the fire district could or should charge new development money for acquisition of property that they already own. So we asked them to go back and look through their inventory of their lands and make sure that we weren't being charged, overcharged. And they have graciously agreed to do that, adjust their fees. We really appreciate that. Believe that their mission is super critical to the region and to our successful future communities. So just wanted to say thanks and we'll be back here again another month, hopefully with a minor tweak to this to make sure that we reflect it, make sure that the NEXA study is accurate. Thank you.
Great. Thanks Chris. Appreciate your comments. Okay, do we have anyone on the phone? I don't have anybody else signed up. I don't know if the district wants to weigh in. Nope. Okay, only we have questions. Okay.
We do not have any callers.
All right.
I'll close that line now.
Okay, very good. So back, oh Supervisor Desmond.
Oh, are we done with the public?
Yeah, we, we know public comments, so come back to the supervisors.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you Dorothy. Thank you Jeff and Erin. And didn't get a chance to talk to you at the opening of Station 68 a couple of weeks ago, but it's good to see you. And I had a discussion with Chief Harms about this and just appreciate staff and the district and BIA coming, coming together to resolve the issue about the land acquisition. And I'd like to make a motion to support the staff recommendation.
Okay, so it's moving second to support the staff recommendation. We're going to maintain the public hearing open because we can still have the fee portion coming back. So I would just tack that onto the motion. We'll maintain the public hearing open. But the motion is to adopt the NEXA study and to return with the fee discussion on July 26th. And yet to be determined time, right, Madam Clerk? Okay, very good. If nothing further, thanks everybody for their comments and work. Please, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you on July 26th.
See you on the 26th of July. You bet. Thank you all. Okay, that takes us then to our next item, 1015 item, which is item 36.
All right. Item 36, you are introducing a fee ordinance amending section 2.7, 2.030 of the Sacramento County Code relating to weights and measures fees. Amend the agricultural commissioner weights and measures public fee schedule for fiscal years 2022 through 23 through 2024 through 25 and waiving full reading and continuing to June 14th for final adoption.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good morning. Chris Flores is here from our agricultural weights.
So good morning Chair Natoli and members of the board. Chris Flores, Sacramento County's Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures. And today I am mostly wearing my sealer hat instead of my ag hat. This morning, I'm here to propose an amendment to the fees that support a very important behind-the-scenes consumer protection program in our county. And that is the testing and examination of our scales and meters, any commercial device that consumers use to purchase products over. And our weights and measures staff on an annual basis test and examine and seal over 16,000 scales and meters in this county. We have five full-time weights and measures staff and one deputy sealer who manages the program in Sacramento. At this time, I'd like to actually introduce Parminder Molly who's behind me. He actually manages and managed the weights and measures program for years. He's my chief deputy right now. And I brought him along just in case you guys have any questions. He has that intimate working knowledge of the program. It's actually his 24th year as of today, too. I have to mention that, as a public servant for Sacramento.
And it's first time coming for the board, too. 24 years, my gosh. Come around more regularly, so.
24 years. Anyway, so he can stand here. I don't want to embarrass him too much. Anyway, so the agenda item before you today introduces an ordinance amending the Sacramento County Code and increasing some of our device registration fees. The fees have not been increased in over 16 years and they cover about 50% of our weights and measures budget. The device registration amount that we are able to charge, if approved by the Board of Supervisors, is set in statute by Business and Professions Code 12240. This code has been amended over the years, so it's, it's at a higher amount than what we are currently charging. I was originally going to bring this item before you in 2019. And at that time, we conducted some research of our neighboring counties and found out that all of our surrounding counties are charging more than we are on the same device registration amounts. And that if we increase our fees, that we will be equalizing those amounts across county lines. We also, as part of this process, reached out to all the businesses that would be affected by the increase. We sent out over 1,000 notices and we gave all the recipients over 30 days to respond and comment. We did receive two calls and they were really specific calls about the devices that they had. We did not receive any calls of opposition or any protests regarding the increased fees. In order to make the increase easier on the businesses, we have taken a phased-in, phased-in approach and, and are proposing to increase the fees, some of the larger fees in a three-year period. Table one in the board letter describes that phase-in approach. The current fees and proposed fees are set through July of 2024 and then beyond 2024, they would remain at the 2024 level unless I were to come back to you and propose a different fee. And so at that point, this concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Chris, I do have a question about the red line version that in the previous version there was specific reference to livestock scales, to animal scales, scales used primarily for weighing feed, seed, farm products. And there also was a section, and I know we don't do much of the dairy inspections any longer, this is handled by state, but there was a, was a specific exclusion for farm milk tanks. And I guess I'm curious why this being stricken? And did we do outreach to farm broil, to the cattlemen's? Again, one of your other hats, obviously, that you wear is with the Agricultural Commissioner. And just as this affects certainly the consumer and the businesses that are responsible for having accuracy in the dispensing of their products, I guess I'm curious as to why those sections were stricken from the, from the update here and how they're being addressed in the new proposal.
So we do, we, the livestock scales were not affected by this unless they, so the livestock scales were not affected by this proposal.
Right. I saw your chart, but you're taking them out, the specific reference in the previous resolution ordinance.
So I don't recall. What we did is we looked at the current Business and Professions Code and tried to model our county code with that. And so we looked at it carefully to update, update what the current language is for our... So if you see.
I see, you can't see behind you, but you have a hand up by you.
Yeah. And, and there is, the livestock scales are in the new, they are mentioned in the, in the strikeout version. So I think they were just moved possibly.
Moved to another section?
Yeah. There, if you look Supervisor Natoli, it says under subsection C for livestock scales.
That talks to the capacity of the scale and I guess the, but there was a specific reference that said they needed to be inspected only as frequently as required by regulation. I don't know what, is the regulation different for inspection of those devices?
No, it's, it's.
Please come on the record, yeah.
It's not any different than any other scales. So the new proposal is more in line with our Business and Professions Code.
Okay, I get that. But so is there any historical references? Is there a reason why you called that, that was called out? Obviously, that was done 15 years ago, but I, it may have been a carryover. And then when it comes to farm milk tanks, do we no longer have any integration with dairies related to dairy production?
And no, we don't have any registered farm milk tanks and those devices in the county. But scales, yes, we do. And the regulation is same as for the other devices.
What, the frequency of inspection, which is what? Annually, semi-annually?
Inspected annually. But for some scales, for livestock scales, USDA requires them to inspect it twice a year. So that's out of our regular frequency. We go there twice a year.
Okay. And, and so there's no change in current practice and there's no increase in the fee. I get that. I just, again, there was a call out here and, and so it may be aligned with Business and Profession Codes, but it is a different frequency than your annual inspections. And so is that, but that's not mentioned here. That, you know, according to USDA regulations, if they require two inspections annually.
Yeah.
So it's not, so not exactly the same. It may be aligned with Business and Profession Codes, but you know, that's a kind of a vague reference for somebody that would want to come and see the county resolution.
Do you understand?
So are you referring to the frequency of livestock scale inspections?
Yes, I am. Because that, that's the part that's being stricken. You're adjusting the capacity, the poundage and so forth relative to whatever the code. But there must have been, that reference must have been in there previously because there was a different frequency. Or maybe, maybe that's changed. I guess that's my question.
No, this ordinance is specifically for fees. So I don't know why they put frequency in there. This is strictly a fee ordinance.
So the, so, so we have a separate Business and Professions Code that we use to follow for frequency of testing. Independent, right, of, of the fee of Business and Professions Code 12240. And so what Parminder is saying is that we do inspect livestock scales based on that schedule. And so this was just not necessary to be in here any longer.
Okay.
I think this was in here originally when this was developed and I'm not exactly sure why.
Right.
But we do test livestock scales following the frequency that is stated in Business and Professions Code. And then we also do extra testing for those scale owners who would like us to test them for the USDA. So we do that on a multiple testing frequency.
And, and that fee structure recognizes that it's done two times or more frequently? I guess there's a per, per inspection cost that is associated with that if somebody wanted to come out and certify their, their device for Department of Agriculture?
So we, we, we do the fee registration independent of testing, right? So this bill goes out to all commercial scale and meter owners once a year. And then we follow the schedule for testing based on another Business and Professions Code, independent of this registration fee. This registration fee supports the program overall. And then if we do have a request to come out and do extra testing, then, you know, we charge them on an hourly basis for that. But otherwise, it's just a known fact that we come out and test their scale on a yearly basis.
Okay. Let me just ask you about the farm milk tanks. Because at one time, we, EMD used to do the dairy inspection. But, so we don't have any registered currently. And I know we've had a declining number of dairy operations in this county. That's, you know, we're below two dozen dairies in this county still existing. But I went, so you take that out. So if somebody wanted to register a farm milk tank with you, where would that fit?
So any device that's not listed here? There's a section that refers to all the miscellaneous devices.
It's a catch-all?
Mm-hmm.
How do you determine the fee?
It's through the limits set in the BNP code.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's, it's already set. I believe it's $20, right?
Yes.
So it's $20 for any scale that doesn't have a special call out. And so what we did is modeled this county code directly off of our current Business and Professions Code.
And then just one other reference in this going, moving away from the agricultural piece, but it goes to the sub-meters for vapors. And previously, in section, subsection B3, or yeah, I guess B3, we talked about, there was a special reference to, particular reference to mobile parks, marinas, recreational vehicle parks, and since shall be inspected, again, tested as frequently as required by regulation. Is that another category that requires more than an annual inspection?
No. So those actually only have to be tested once every 10 years.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's also set in statute. So they bring them in to us.
Who brings them in to you?
The park owners.
Okay. But we have a registration and so you have a calendar that, on a DCEO basis that?
They're, they're supposed to bring them in every 10 years. What we do is we usually test them based on complaints. If they're not, if they're not bringing them in, because it takes some time to take them out of the parks and bring them in.
Well, and, and this has been an issue, and I know Supervisor Kennedy, I met with some of our governmental relations staff and with some of the state folks, relative to you, mobile home parks to some of the older parks, some of the hazards that are present at times if there isn't good maintenance and oversight and who's responsible when it comes to complaints. I guess I was just curious and didn't. I guess I was just curious and didn't pertain necessarily to marinas, we have some older marinas, but I know it did certainly pertain to some of the older mobile home parks where you have, I guess, a master meter and then you've got sub-meters that go to, you know, the various units, a lot of them being much older mobile homes. And we've had a couple of bad incidents, one that resulted in a death in Supervisor Kennedy's district, and we've had a very severe fire. And again, where propane tanks were a part of the mix, whether they were metered or not. And so I guess my question is, and again, I don't belabor this this morning, this is a fee ordinance, but, you know, is there something more that we can do rather than just rely on complaints basis to be a little more, take a little more initiative as it relates to at least the role that we play, which is limited, and that was part of the conversation that Supervisor Kennedy and I had with the state representatives about complaints that relate to this. And there is a safety element here and you have much older installations and so forth. And if we don't see them once every 10 years, I think their frequency of inspection on other matters that relate, related to parks was a little more frequent than that, but not much. And so I guess I'm curious, this is an area where maybe we ought to look at without, again, burdening businesses or, you know, operations that may have certainly a legacy aspect to them, but also that can relate to issues beyond just the accuracy of the device. I trust if you're inspecting a device and there's a safety issue, you could refer that to Building Department or you could refer to Environmental Management Department?
So they will actually bring them into us, so we do not go out to the park to do the inspection. So they have to dismantle them, bring them into us. And so if there's a safety issue out on the site, we're not going to see it. They're going to bring that meter to us and we're going to test it in our lab, right? So one thing that we can do is inventory what we have out there and get everybody on a schedule where they bring them in. And so it's not a burden to them, we do a certain percentage.
Yeah.
And have them bring them in on a, you know, every year, a certain percentage of their meters. And that's an absolute, you know, reasonable task.
Are they required to obtain a building permit if they take the gas meter, basically the vapor meter off of the system? I assume maybe it's a simple, you know, matter, maybe not, but you're still, you're going to a system that distributes basically, you know, some petroleum product, vapor otherwise, to other units where people are, particularly human occupancy. I just, I'm curious, is that, is there something we ought to have a little bit of coordination? It doesn't, this doesn't get visited but every 15 or 16 years, this ordinance, and I just, I raise that issue, again, it's certainly relevant, I don't know, Supervisor Kennedy had any questions along the same lines, but it's, again, getting some more eyes on some of these operations without being intrusive, without being, you know, overly, you know, regulatory, but every 10 years is still, a lot can happen in 10 years' time, good or not so good.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, you covered, you covered it pretty well.
Okay, so what you've committed to is what, Chris? Is you're going to, you're going to have a set schedule that we know and that...
Yeah, that's a, it's an easy, it's a fairly easy task to inventory what we have out there. If we don't have the, say, the mobile home park registered with us, we go out and we can check to make sure that they actually do have sub-meters on site. If they do, it's an inventory of the park and then a notice to the owner that they need to bring, you know, a certain percentage of them in. And, you know, we just, usually they have a seal on them that says the last time they were tested, so that's our marker for knowing what's out there.
So these are sub-meters, these are the ones that actually go to the, to the mobile home or to the living unit?
Correct.
In addition, and what about, is the master meter then inspected every year?
So the master meter usually comes from, so it would come from SMT or somebody, or PGE, yeah. And so then the other meters would be owned by the park, so.
Well, again, I think it's an area where we may have limited oversight and again, we certainly want to be cognizant of costs, but...
But it's doable.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, that's the only questions I had.
Okay.
All right, this is, any other questions if I don't see anybody in the queue? So this is a public hearing, this would be an introduction today and then return to us in a week's time, so, all right? No other questions then? All right, Supervisor Desmond?
Just really quick, I mean, Parminder and Crisandra, I mean, this is a thank you for the work you do. I mean, you obviously don't come before the board and so I just want to take the opportunity to thank you because the work you do is so crucial to consumer protection in Sacramento County and certainly appreciate your, you working with the business community about the impacts these fees have on them as well. Just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you.
All right, very good then, so do we have a motion on this item? Sheriff, move staff recommendation, introduce the attached ordinance. Okay, we have motion and second, nothing further, please vote.
unanimous vote, and I'm sorry, I missed who made the second, oh, Mr. Kennedy, thank you. All right, so item 37 is the Sheriff's Office and Stable Productions LLC presentation on Wild Horse docu-series.
Great. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Brad Rose, I'm here on behalf of the Sheriff's Office and the new reentry services commander, Lieutenant Chris Baker and Sergeant Kristin Marcos, to give an update not only on the Wild Horse program and the history behind it, but also why the Sheriff's Office is in favor of a docu-series to capture the great work that is occurring there, not only for the equine industry, but also for the offender population and positive interventions. Our Wild Horse program began in 2013 when the county of Sacramento entered into an agreement with the Bureau of Land Management to provide a corrections-based program in which wild Mustangs would be trained, engendled, and prepared for public adoption. Since that time, 165 horses have been prepared for adoption, not only to the public, but now a growing market of government agencies that are using the horses for various services provided by those agencies.
Could you give some examples, what examples, do they use them for, you know, search and rescue, they use them for...
Search and rescue as well as enforcement, Bureau of Land Management, as well as Border Patrol. And we have a number of state, state, local, and county agencies that are using corrections-based trained Mustangs in their mounted units.
Okay, thanks.
We've had 109 offenders go through at least one phase of the program. And of that, of that number, 30 have completed all six phases of our horsemanship program, which, again, not only prepares them for life beyond incarceration, but gives them those, what we consider the essential work skills for them to get out and to reenter the workforce after their period of incarceration. Using the Board of State and Community Corrections definition for recidivism, our most recent recidivism data poll as of December showed that our program had a 19.2 recidivism rate, which on a national level is pretty impressive. And so that is the importance of our program, outside of the opportunity that we give the Mustangs to leave long-term holding facilities, but to find homes with, again, the public and county agencies. But we're getting people out of custody and keeping them out of custody. And more important is the number of individuals who are leaving custody to become self-sufficient and obtain employment, not always in the equine industry, but are best prepared to get out and to be self-sufficient.
Have any of those that have left custody and gone through the program been able to rehome the horse with them, or are they not allowed to do that?
We have not had, that I'm aware of, an individual who has taken possession of a horse after they have left custody. We do have a number of individuals that have continued in the equine industry outside of custody who possibly own them, but I don't, I don't know.
But they haven't adopted directly through the program, are they prohibited or are they allowed to do that? If they were met the criteria, would they be allowed to? Say they bonded with that particular animal, worked the animal?
Well, I think as an agency, we would prohibit them from adopting a horse while they were in custody. And I'm not aware of any individual that has gotten out of custody and has adopted a horse that they were part of the program with. I'm not aware of any, no, sir.
Yeah, okay, but yeah, but I wasn't saying while they were in custody adopted a horse, but I would just, as they left and maybe you got their, you know, legs underneath them again and were able to sustain themselves and so forth, so, and you may have found a direct interest in certainly, you know, in the animal husbandry, so. But you, but we don't, so you don't necessarily track that, but you're not aware of it, what you're saying?
Not specifically from our program. I am well aware of a number of individuals who are proud owners of wild Mustangs that they have gotten from other BLM opportunities.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
So if there's no questions about the history of the program or the benefits that it's providing to our offender population, I'd like to introduce to you Tyler Wayman from Stable Productions, who was well-vetted by the Sheriff's Office to ensure that any docu-series that was done meets our expectation of highlighting not only the fantastic work that's occurring with the program, but also the, not only equine healing by giving horses an opportunity to experience ownership, but the positive outcomes of the interventions of our Wild Horse program.
Great, okay, good, thanks. Tyler?
Good morning.
Good morning. Chairman Natoli, Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Frost, Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Frost again, because I wrote you twice, this is an Anchorman moment. I read what's on the teleprompter. And ladies and gentlemen in attendance today, first of all, thank you for having me today. I sincerely appreciate it, on behalf of myself, my team, my company, and all those that we represent. And thank you for the nature, for the acceptance of the nature of my dress as it was not field-tested since before COVID. As previously stated, my name's Tyler Wayman and I am the owner and executive producer at Stable Productions. First and foremost, this project has been longcoming and it's been a treasure for me to be able to put this together from the production side. Six years ago, since I discovered what you guys were all up to at the Wild Horse inmate program at R3C, it's been my mission and has been adopted by my team to tell the story of the successful partnership between the Bureau of Land Management, our correction system, and all those who govern that partnership. In that time, we've successfully established a partnership with you, the county of Sacramento, and meticulously developed a docu-series concept that I believe the county and all of its representatives will be proud to be associated with, a story of good and how it's spreading through and because of this program. I look forward to answering any questions you guys may have relating to the project and anything in regards to production and the success of this program.
Great, Tyler, thanks for being with us, Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, I've long supported, long, six years supported this program. I'm just curious, because in the staff report, I don't know if this is for you or the Sheriff's Department, in the staff report, it says that no extra additional personnel are necessary for things like escorts and all of that. And I'm just, how does that work? How's that happen?
I would probably defer to Brad on that one.
The use of reserve deputy sheriffs and staff already in place, there won't be any added cost to the Sheriff's Department or the county to ensure the security or to escort the production team.
But doesn't the use of reserves cost money? You're not, you're already using those reserves, is what you're saying? Are you adding reserves, is what I'm asking?
We are not adding any positions at any expense to the Sheriff's Office and not all reserves are paid, some are volunteers.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? So Tyler, have you, I guess my question, have you done a production around a program that has similarities or this is your first venture into this arena or I'm just...
Yes, great question. No, in fact, our production team, a lot of times, it's not always on the acumen and experience of the leader, but those that he brings into his team or she brings into his team. And so I would say collectively, yes, we do have a deep bench when it comes to working in this category, both within reentry programs, but also within things that you might see on TV that pertain to officers in the field, to kind of leave that general and leave names out. So yes, we do have a deep bench for that.
And you've done other productions or this is your first large production?
No, no, definitely done, I used to be the executive producer of shows in the past. I come up from a long line of show producers, as well as I have a background over the past decade of developing shows for myself, Pass or Fail on that, as well as other people for boutique and mainstream media, so, yeah.
So you haven't got any Oscars yet, you're lying?
Man, I just had to ask that question. Not yet, no, there is a start though, and I believe, candidly, I believe that this program is one that will garner the attention necessary for that to happen. But my, my hope really is to showcase the good work that is going on.
Your sense of humility is awesome.
I mean, the product's not even made yet.
Well, when you get your Oscar, you're up there, don't forget Sacramento County and all the good work that you have.
We'll definitely bring it in for you to hold, there's no question. Yeah, that's right.
Okay, all right.
I've got a question.
Yeah, go ahead, sir Phil.
Thank you. So in all seriousness, are you fully aware of what happened with the jailbirds situation here in Sacramento County?
I am, yes, and I definitely am in consideration of all the concerns that you guys have. I look at myself as the gatekeeper, first and foremost, of protecting the interests of both the county and everybody that is under your purview.
So you would agree that the value of your production on this particular subject really is, for all intents and purposes, it is telling the viewers, not just about the program itself, but about kind of the culture of Sacramento County and what we value here. I'm hoping that you're affirming that with your intent as you've described it, because that still stings quite a bit, at least for this supervisor, with what happened with the tabloid production of something that certainly did not put Sacramento County in a favorable light nationwide. And so that's, quite frankly, why you're here today. This is the first time I think we've had an opportunity to actually hear from a producer before production begins, so I'm hopeful that that will be a lesson learned, not just for us, but for you.
Absolutely. Let me first just start off by saying your concerns and the concerns of those who've communicated that before are heard and acknowledged. My endeavor, and we don't know each other, you guys just met me today, my background and the reason that I started this business was because of a specific family in TV that does not represent what I believe to be the best aspects of society. And upon entering into this industry, I said, my personal interest is taking this tool of media and using it to push on the rudder of society in a way that's enhancing, not in detriment of its people and those that we put on screen. In this business, there is great opportunity to move fast and move selfishly, but there's also equal opportunity to move slow and to move efficiently, but to do so in a way that is enhancing and encouraging for not only the people, I would say edifying actually, for the people on screen, but those that are behind and those that view. Because what are we perpetuating through the things we do? Your actions, your words mean something, and everything that I build, I seek to do good with. And it's, I think a lot of those sentiments are really what created partnerships and the approval that was given to me by you guys. And I take that very seriously, because I see the opportunity for people, specifically the buyers of this content, to take advantage of people who may not know the business or may not know how it works or whatever it may be, I'll leave that there. My specific interest and my specific desire is to use this tool for good and to showcase the already existent good that's in this program, this partnership that's already been established. So absolutely hear what you have to say in that regard and look forward to coming back at the next session and showing, not only with award, but with your yes vote for our performance.
Good to hear, thank you.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, just real briefly, thank you Supervisor Serna for bringing that up, it was on my mind last night when I was going over my pack and I forgot. You know, I'll say this, that first of all, thank you for your answer, it's now on tape, so shoot. It's now on tape, so should you do anything differently, your reputation is going to be on the line. But the reason that I'm comfortable now, you know, a promotional video came forward with, about this program, and again, I support the program 100%, was not comfortable, I believe Supervisor Serna and I both spoke out, that we were not comfortable with the promotional because of the bad taste in our mouth from that previous experience. So it is something that is on our minds and it was embarrassing. And I want this to be something that we can point to. We can help you with our social media and promote and something that will make this program, which is a great program, really shine and not take advantage of people in a bad situation. So thank you.
Well, thanks Tyler. I guess I'm just, we're curious about the production. So will, will you be doing both in facility and out of facility as a part of your compilation? Again, I don't want to get beyond, you know, what your production is, but you know, will you go to where the wildlands are, where the, the horses are and walk through that? Let alone the, obviously, the human situations people find themselves in because of, you know, the certain behaviors. And then obviously, the folks that, you know, are responsible for the in custody care and oversight. I guess I'm just curious, without getting into, you know, your entirety of how you, you know, plan to roll this out, but will it take in those? Because again, we've had some local media accounts that have done, you know, positive being yet. So, you know, a minute, minute and a half on your nightly news. I know that it's been written up in, certainly in the Sacramento Bee and I think it's other local publications, maybe more broadly and, you know, specific publications. But I'm just curious, so is that kind of the walkthrough or the angle? And you've talked about the positive. I'm just curious as to how you might be kind of at least plan to approach it without letting, letting any trade secrets out before you get a chance to do your production.
Right, right, yes. You want to sneak peek, I get you. So the, the goal of what we're doing is to obviously go as far and as deep as we are allowed to go with respect to the considerations already stated. The story arc, as, as we would use in our vernacular, is kind of multifaceted. I want to understand better the story of our offenders from their life before incarceration and their time during, and how that leads into the relationship of the Mustang and/or burrow in the, in the field, out in the middle of nowhere, prior to Gather, through Gather, and transport to facilities and then into our, into R3C. In the meeting of those two relationships. And then, once we get them together, how do we understand that story of how they help one another? That symbiotic relationship of man taming beast, beast taming man? And that beautiful poetic story. And then the release. Once they're released, both offender and animal, what's their story beyond? And what is the hope for the future? I think post-COVID, in all the years that we've been going through this, we're all in, in, in an interest, shared interest for a positive story.
Sure.
And so that's the crux of this, is seeing how these two come together and change not just their circumstance now, but they build on lessons of the past and how they can change themselves for the future. And then where they go from there. Again, to your, your question about the borders or any other use, family homes. And really, to kind of step back a little bit more, even the stories of how that affects society on a global level, or at least a national level, as to our rangelands and considerations there and just the, the commentary around the psychological benefits of a relationship like this as well. So as far as we can go, we would love to go.
That's interesting. I had a chance to be in Nevada recently and there were signs on some of the homes in the area where I was at. You know, we support our wild horses. Again, I don't know what the, you know, I had some presumption of what maybe the debate was regarding, but it was just interesting. And then, you know, certainly hearing you this morning. So with, with your, you know, real life portrayal and obviously the story arc you described, what is the length of the production? Is it a, is it a mini-series? Is it a one hour? Is, I mean, obviously, you shoot a lot of footage, but then, you know, putting it all together, that becomes the, the way you ultimately put your story together. So what's, what's the length of time or what's the planned rollout? You know, sequel, pre-sequel?
Great question. A lot of that's dictated by network. The business side of this, I'll leave the details out of, because it's slightly boring. As applies to your question. The focus and the intent, as I build towards the future in this, is I would love to expound upon the work that's already been done. And if you look at a traditional series, or rather, even just a standalone documentary, you're given X amount of time, call it two hours or, you know, 10 episodes, to get through that story and explain all the variables at play. My desire and my hope would be to build this series with a mindset of digging into all the facets over not just, you know, five, six, seven, 12 episodes, but over multiple seasons to really get into the details of what's here. Because it is, without description, it's, it's a massive undertaking that will require a lot of time and research and energy. And, and so my hope would be to take that into a multi-series approach.
Okay, thanks, Wayne. Supervisor Desmond?
Just a quick question. Would you be open to any creative ideas about a cameo role for Supervisor Natoli upon his retirement?
Everything is up for discussion.
He'll bring his own cowboy boots and cowboy hat.
That'd be mucking stalls.
That's all right. Don't take him seriously, Tyler, that's all right. Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I certainly thank you for being with us today. And we certainly look to see, you know, your work as you continue to put it together. So then, I guess this is the action item for us, or just receiving the informational update. So this is an informational update and I trust you'll keep us apprised as you go along. And thank you, Brad, and to our folks from the Sheriff's Department for your ongoing work, obviously, with our population that's housed at R3C, but also obviously the opportunity to, I think, have a feature that tells, tells some very important stories.
Thank you all for your support. It means a lot to myself and my team.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler, thanks, Brad.
We did not have any public comments too, by the way.
All right, I was gonna ask that, yeah. So, all right, that's an update. And we really appreciate folks being here today and for that update. All right, we have one more morning item to handle, and that's item 38.
Item 38, this is County Service Area Number One. Conduct a public hearing on the fiscal year 2022-23 service charges. Confirm Engineers' Report and Adopt Resolution Setting Service Charges for Fiscal Year 2022-23.
Great, good morning.
Good morning. Kamal Atwal, Principal Civil Engineer with DOT, presenting the CSA1 service charges for fiscal year 22-23. So CSA1 funds the maintenance operations and electrical costs for the safety and streetlights in the unincorporated area. There's standard service charges that were approved in, they were fixed by Proposition 218 in 1996. In 2006, we introduced two more categories, enhanced decor and decorative service charges, and they have the inflation provisions. Inflation factors are based on either the CPI index or the smud electrical rate increases with the 5% ceiling cap. It's based on the CPI index, proposed increase for this fiscal year is 4.2% for fiscal year 22-23. The proposed service charges are also summarized in the board letter in the second page, which shows the previous year and the upcoming fiscal year. First three rows are fixed and the four, bottom four one are inflated by 4.2%. So County maintains over 26,000 safety and streetlights, which are owned by states, smud, and County. County owns 24,000 plus safety streetlights. 90% of our inventory is retrofitted to LED. And we're continuing to do that as the funds become available, which helps in reducing our energy consumption cost and reduce our overall CSA1 budget. So current retrofit loans, we have outstanding loan is, it was, the initial loan was for $3 million. Right now, after our June payment, we'll still have outstanding balance of over $2.2 million. So that's my item in front of you. So basically, we're asking for, open the public hearing, take public testimony and close the hearing and adopt the resolution confirming the engineer's report and setting the fiscal year service charges for 22-23.
Great, thanks, Kamal. I will open the public hearing in just a moment. I just wanted to ask, I know that we were able to, through the loan, it was a smud loan, was it, was it not?
This is the California Energy Commission.
Oh, the Energy Commission loan?
Yeah, we already paid off the smud loan.
Okay. And so, well, what is the, what is the length of term for that loan? Was it 10 years initially?
So the remaining is 10 years. It was a, a, first payment was made in December of 2018. The disbursement came in 16 and 17.
So is it 15-year, 15-year period?
Yeah, 14-year, yeah.
14, 14-year period? Okay. But as you said, by doing the LED retrofit, it has reduced the energy consumption, but also energy costs, I guess, relative, obviously, to the cost of energy and the usage. But, so it was wise. Have we converted most of the 24,000 lights? Or what's the percentage of lights that have been converted to LEDs versus those that still remain with the other types of illumination?
So at this point, we have 2,557 streetlights that we need to convert into LED. So that's about 10% of our inventory that's left. And we're, we're shooting for at least 200 a year. So as the funds become available, we buy the supplies and swap them out.
It just occurred to me, again, we took the Energy Commission loan, but I want, you know, if we were able to maybe reach out to them with the idea, obviously, we'd like to, you know, finish up the remaining 10% or so of our lights and maybe ask them if we could pause for a year or two on a loan payment that would allow us to maybe, you know, take some of those dollars and actually do a conversion, so we could actually get our inventory to zero or near zero on the LED. Again, you know, the state's not in any particular financial trouble. Obviously, we have obligations under the loan, but I'm just wondering if we could structure that in a way where we could, you know, maybe, you know, add a year or two. You know, and the interest was very favorable, if I'm not mistaken. It was near, near zero interest?
Yeah, it's 1%.
Yeah. And so I'm just wondering, and I may pose that, you know, maybe for Dave and others to take a look at. I mean, obviously, we're going to be good on our commitment, but if we could do that, recognizing that, you know, energy saved is, you know, it benefits everyone that's, you know, certainly within the smud area. I think we have a few lights that may be within the PG&E service area, but I'm just wondering if that's something we could take a look at, Kamal, not to burn you with it, but ask to, to get a, you know, either a deferral on our loan payments for a year or two and allow us to go back in and, 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 and take another batch of the LED conversion. So, which is, you know, they last a long time. We know the energy savings can be significant, depending upon which ones you're changing out, like some of them. So, okay, that's all I, all I had. I just, again, that thought occurred to me as I was thinking about this last night. So, all right, thanks. Any questions, Kamal? If not, I'll open the public hearing. And you don't have anybody signed up in chambers. In fact, the chambers are pretty empty now. But do we have anybody on the phone?
We did not.
Okay, gonna get off easy, Kamal. Okay, all right. With that, then, I will, we've received no public testimony. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for a motion. Okay, moving second into approve a staff recommendation, the resolution that's attached. If there's nothing further, no comments, let's please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thanks. 11:59, all right. Got her, got her done before noon, so. All right, we're gonna come back this afternoon. We've got a couple items this afternoon. And I guess we could take up the appointments or we want to hold this today afternoon. We got, I know we have some adjournments as well this afternoon, so.
We do have closed session.
Right noon? Okay.
Yes.
I know, I wasn't gonna adjourn. I just wanted to see if there was anything else you wanted to do.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, all right, then, if not, we're gonna recess into a closed session and we'll return back in open session for our afternoon items at 2 o'clock. So, all right, closed session upstairs. Good afternoon, want to call back into session the June 7, 2022 Meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And again, thank those that joined us this morning and those that are back for the afternoon session as well. And with that, I'll go to our clerk to call the roll of staff to quorum.
Okay, good afternoon. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we have a fairly brief agenda this afternoon. And I just, again, a gentle reminder, but for those that may be tuning in and didn't know it was Election Day, it is. And there's still plenty of time to get to the polls, to cast a vote. So encourage you to do so and thank all those that have, so. All right, with that, then, let's go to our 2 o'clock. There was no carryover from this morning's items, so we'll go right to our first 2 o'clock item.
Okay, item 39 is the One-Year Action Plan Federal Program Allocation Process Workshop Number Two.
Great, I see Sylvia coming to the podium. And I know LaShelle and others are here in the audience and Bruce Wagstaff's been working with staff from SHRA as well, so.
Good afternoon. Madam Clerk, I would also like to be able to use the projector.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, good afternoon. Sally Inigaz, Program Manager with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. I'm the Program Manager for the Federal Programs Division. Today is the second in workshop for the Community Development Block Grant Program, the allocation process. As you may recall, I was before you in February to give you an overview of the schedule and to have a high-level overview of what are eligible activities for Community Development Block Grant. At the same time, SHRA and county staff have been meeting and reviewing projects and identifying projects and evaluating them for eligibility. And so today's workshop will be to present you with a draft, I'll make that, emphasize that, a draft list of projects for your review and comment, as well as receive any additional suggestions for projects to be evaluated. The overall process, we will be before you with the action plan in late October. And as a reminder, we have about approximately, we estimate 2.5 million for these projects, which are public facilities and infrastructure projects. The attachment two in your, in your board letter lists the draft as it stands. I'm just gonna quickly go over them. So the first is the pedestrian improvements in South, the South Sacramento area. I'd like to point out, this is in support of the courtyard, sorry, cornerstone in development, which includes 108 affordable units and apartment, two apartment complexes and 18 single-family homes developed by, the latter developed by Habitat for Humanity. So we like to see these to support the affordable housing in the communities. The second is improvements to the William Land, to William Pond ADA improvements. It's the fishing pier. Next is Rio Linda area streetlights. Currently, that is in design, and so this would be for construction. The improvements to one building out at Mather Community Campus, Building 1708. These are fire alarm system improvements that need to bring it up to code, the current code, which has changed since it was initially installed. And then we have the no further notice of funding availability for parks, as well as for, a second one for small agencies. And then we also build in funding for environmental review for all of these projects. With that, that's my brief presentation and I'm available for questions, comments.
Great, thanks Sally. Maybe members of the board, I just wanted to, I had a chance to brief with LaShelle and Christine yesterday and appreciate the work that goes into this. As it relates to the item number four on your attachment two that was just up on the board there, there's no doubt, again, I've seen this in the CIP, and again, I know that last year we put in significant sums of dollars into Mather. Again, SHRA has been a real partner in replacing boilers and some of the things for habitability out at the campus and appreciate the contributions over the years. Question I raised, and I raised this in my briefing as well with the county executive, that I know we're doing a Kitchell update of the facility assessment there at, at Mather, and I trust that some of this could qualify for ARPA funding as well. Block grants, we get a pretty static amount annually, and they're identified for use, obviously, in low-to-mod, moderate-income areas that are disadvantaged or severely disadvantaged. And in my conversations yesterday, I know we have a little bit of time between now and when you come back to us in October, as Sally noted. I'd like to take an opportunity, again, I don't want to delay anything as fire, life, and safety, but we put nearly $8 million into campus last year. This wasn't the highest on the list. There is a system in place. I'm supportive of getting fire alarm systems repaired and certainly updated, and more than just in one building. If we have people that occupy other areas, it's got to be necessary there, too. I'd like to have us, one, take a look at ARPA as being potentially a source. And I also would like us to take a look at the block grant amount that's shown here. There are a couple of other things that I raised. I had a chance to talk with staff just in the last few minutes from SHRA. One of them, I want to do a scan. There are a couple qualifying portions of census tracts in the Rosemont community, and I know we talked earlier today on an item in Supervisor Kennedy's district, and we have an item here in Supervisor Frost's district on streetlights. I think the areas that remain that still qualify for block grant eligibility all have streetlights, but I'm not certain of that, so I'd like to take a look at that. And then, secondly, one that's been on the list and some information that I think is, I don't know how new it is, but it may help inform a request that's been ongoing. And I know we've had both SHRA and Department of Transportation at the county take a look at it. But down in the community of Locke, where we have walkways, both wooden walkways, as well as kind of a hodgepodge mix of sidewalks along Main Street there, that concrete, asphalt, and wood. And for the amount of public, but certainly the interface with people that visit Locke, as well as residents and property owners and business owners, there's been a standing request to get some assistance. And we do have a kind of an interesting mix there with private and public properties, but also pedestrian easements. And so, what came out of the conversation yesterday is that my office will work to arrange a meeting with SHRA involving, obviously, the county exec's office. Bruce City's in the representative after 70th of June, so I think Bruce is off the hook unless I get the meeting set. And Department of Transportation to talk about this, and I'd like to at least have it considered before we jump in, you know, both feet with the allocation for the, addressing the issue of the fire alarm system. I think there might be another funding source there. Block grant monies are more limited, probably even more so than ARPA monies. And I, before we make this as the identified project, I'd like to take a look at those two items before we come back here in, I guess, October timeframe, so. Those are my comments. And I see Supervisor Serna, you're up.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I don't know if there's any relevancy to this, but I noticed that attachment three is an old dated supervisory map. But those are the old districts, and I don't know if that has any bearing on what we're being asked to consider today. But I did want to point that out.
Okay.
Good observation.
The CDBG-eligible areas do not change, so we'll make sure that it really, it shouldn't affect anything today.
Okay. I would say, though, in the future, though, it's probably good practice just to update and keep current, the political maps of the county.
Yes.
Yeah, this has a December 3, 2020 PIS date on it, and so, December 7, 2021, that'll all change, so. Okay. Any other supervisors' comments about any of the projects, any other suggestions for consideration? This is the second of the workshops. And again, I know when it next comes back to us, it'll be a much more finalized format. So, if there are other thoughts or suggestions, now's the time to weigh in. Okay, I don't see other comments. Do we have any public commenters on this item? Nobody in chambers, any callers?
We do not.
Okay. All right, well, Sally, that's, I guess that was the easy part. And we'll look forward, then. So, the next time you come back, you'll have a finalized recommendation in the...
Correct.
And again, these are for 2023 projects. So, you're still working on 2022 projects, right? Yeah.
Oh, yes.
One final question. So, on the NOFA, when, what's the timeframe for that, for the 2023 work plan?
You mean 2022? We haven't released it for the 2022.
I know you haven't done 2022. I'm asking about 2023, so you don't do that until the spring of 2023?
Correct.
That's my question, so. The one you do this year that we'll see will be the, because you work on the federal fiscal year as well, right? Or, no, you work on December, January.
Correct.
Not to lack about three different ways to do it, so. Okay, very good. All right, so this is just a receive and file informational workshop. And any public input we receive between now and then, obviously, we could transmit that to the agency and keep folks involved. Bruce, thanks for your assistance as well, so I appreciate it. Okay, that was it for that item. No public comments, so we'll go to item 40.
Item 40, approval to place Article 34 Affordable Housing Measure on the November 8, 2022 ballot.
Okay, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Sorry. Good afternoon, supervisors. I'm Helen Peterson, a management analyst at SHRA. I'm here to present on the item approval to place Article 34 Affordable Housing Measure on the November 8, 2022 ballot. As you may know, Article 34 was added to the California Constitution in 1950 to require voter approval of publicly assisted housing projects. Voters were asked to approve a certain number of dwelling units prior to their being assisted by a public agency if a majority of the units in the development will house lower-income households. Since 1968, Sacramento voters have approved Article 34 ballot measures to facilitate the development of affordable housing units in five separate elections, all approved by a majority vote of the electorate. The typical development in Sacramento subject to Article 34 is newly constructed housing in which more than 49% of the units are restricted to lower-income persons and carry a below-market-rate loan from SHRA or some other form of public subsidy. At this time, the number of units approved in the previous 2004 Article 34 ballot measure is running out. In addition, the initial Article 34 voter authorization expires in 2024. In order to continue to build affordable housing using public funds, a new Article 34 ballot measure is required. SHRA is proposing that the county of Sacramento place a measure on the November 8, 2022 ballot requesting voter approval to provide public funding for affordable housing units subject to Article 34. The proposed ballot language would provide approval to annually develop, acquire, and construct housing for low-income persons and families using public funds commiserate with 1% of the existing housing units in the county. Any unconstructed housing units in each year will be carried over. To gauge the level of support in the community for the ballot measure, SHRA hired an experienced research firm to conduct a survey of likely voters regarding their views on Article 34. They determined that the measure was viable and would likely be approved by voters in all cities in the unincorporated county. Similar measures have been successful in other cities and counties in California. In addition, SHRA staff has involved all cities within Sacramento County in discussion regarding the ballot measure and in the survey. All cities are in agreement that the ballot measure is needed and have agreed to participate. Placement of the measure on the November 2022 ballot is important as should this measure not be approved, all public agencies within Sacramento County and the unincorporated area of Sacramento would be out of compliance with Article 34 and would no longer be able to utilize public funding for the development, construction, or acquisition of affordable housing after 2024. In summary, staff recommends adoption of the attached resolution, which authorizes placement of the Article 34 ballot measure on the November 8, 2022 ballot for voter approval. That concludes our presentation, and staff is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn to colleagues first. Any questions? I did have a question. So, this is embedded in the state constitution going back 72 years ago. The, has there been some attempt to change this legislatively or go to the voters? I, I don't know if it was actually put in there by the legislature or if it actually voted in by the people of the state of California. And obviously, that's not easily undone, but it seems that, you know, a lot of things have changed, and certainly the need for housing. And the types of public housing that is constructed, I'm sure differs significantly, if not almost, you know, 180 degrees from some of the public housing projects of the, you know, immediately post-World War II or even pre-World War II housing. But, so what's, maybe LaShelle, or you can respond to that.
Yeah, there have been attempts to, at the state level, to introduce legislation, but they have not been successful. LaShelle, I don't know.
Yes, that is correct. The legislature has tried to do some constitutional amendments, but, and we've been tracking this for a few years, but each time, it just has not moved forward. And so, that's why, really, at this particular time, we really feel the need that we have to put this on and do a local measure. But we were hoping that they would reopen the Constitution and remove this.
Does it require a constant, I think, when we talked yesterday, does it require a constitutional convention or amendment to the Constitution can be submitted to the voters of the state of California? There are a couple different processes for doing that. This one just require legislative approval to actually put it before the voters to?
It requires legislative approval to put it before the voters, but to actually just get rid of this requirement would be opening the state constitution.
I see.
So, that's why we're before you to continue to follow what's outlined in the current Constitution.
Right. And I guess the thing that's interesting here in addition to, obviously, you know, now pushing the threshold for, you know, restricting or downsizing the ability to do housing after 24, but we're bearing the cost. You went and hired a consultant. I don't know what that cost, and, you know, and staff worked to get this here and so forth, and we're going to bear the cost of putting the measure on the ballot, which will be, you know, rather nominal, because it's not a special election. But it just seems to me that, you know, and we're not the only community. I imagine the state of California, it has to go through this exercise on a fairly regular basis. It would seem to me, for all the things the legislature seems to find time and interest to deal with, that they might, you know, and for all the proclamations that come out about how important housing is and the need, and again, the reality of it is that's true. It just becomes, it becomes a potential barrier to the affordability index and to allow for, you know, public housing projects or those that are supported through public dollars in one way or the other to be created. It just seems to me, it doesn't make any sense why the legislature wouldn't make this a priority. And maybe there's other forces at work here that, you know, would block that, but anyway.
We agree with everything.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I guess that's why I'm sitting here, not over there, so. All right, if there's no public comment, we have nobody on the phone. I do have people signed up in the chambers, though, so I have both Dan and Claudia. So, if you'll stand by, we'll take our public testimony and see if there's any more questions. So, Dan, you signed up this morning, and Claudia, you signed up this afternoon. So, you're both welcome to come forward in whichever order you choose.
First of all, I want to apologize to you guys for this morning. I was under my cancer treatment medicine, and I was having hot flashes, so I couldn't really think or talk.
You did just fine. Thanks for telling us that.
I want to state this for a fact, though. SHRA and low-income housing is downright critical for Sacramento right now. That's not a joking matter, it's a life-saving matter. The homes out here are working their tails off in jobs and still can't afford a home. I'm witness to this on my American River Homes crews, okay? I have 39 crews from here in Sacramento. You guys are aware of this. I can't stress enough how much SHRA is critically important for low-income housing homes being built. We need way more low-income housing built than mixed housing. Mixed housing, to me, is a mistake because it takes away the homes of people that can't afford it already here. I mean, it's ridiculously high, the rent and everything here. You guys know this, it's way high. It's impossible for a single person to get home without a SHRA. And I'm so happy to see her here today. I haven't seen her in a while, and I thought I was going to die from brain tumor, but I survived, and I'm fighting cancer now. But you know what? That's God's will. I'm here, you know, trying to do the best to save everybody, keep you safe on the American River, and I want my American River Homes crew members to have a home, not a shelter. Shelter is just a Band-Aid to a wound that does not work and just don't weigh money. SHRA is the cure. Low-income housing is the cure. You guys have the power right now to end homelessness in Sacramento. You guys do, right now. It's no joke. You guys can take thousands of people off the American River, thousands of people in the city with SHRA's help and low-income housing. You guys are making the right choice by doing this. I support this 100%, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks for all your good work, and, you know, hopefully, everything works out with your health challenges, so. Okay, next, Claudia.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me this afternoon. And as many of you know, I am an animal advocate, a homeless animals advocate. And again, I'm here to speak in their behalf. We talk about, you know, low-income housing. We talk about shelters. We talk about different options and venues or avenues with respects to tackle the homeless crisis in projects. But I don't hear speaking about that including the homeless pets. As a matter of fact, a lot of the shelters today, they do not accept their pets. For example, in domestic violence situations, they will have to leave their pets behind, which in a lot of times, the pets do get, you know, killed or abused in that respect. With respects to the homeless animals and the, you know, American River Parkway, a lot of times, they are the invisible, they are the disposable animals. They, you talk about with respects to the low income associated with mental health and going to a shelter, but their animals have to be left behind. So, there is no rescue for them. I brought up the point that there's about 11,000 homeless people in Sacramento. Again, if I do the simple math of, you know, 11 times 4, you're looking over 40,000, you know, invisible animals out there that you're going to have to deal with. Otherwise, you're going to be responsible for slaughter, and I don't know if you're ready for that because all these animals will end up at animal control, and they will be put down. And that is something you need to recognize, that is something you have to take in consideration. When it comes to low income, what I look as a way of maybe a Band-Aid or not a solution, but at least an idea. We talk about how animals are so important in the lives of everybody with respects to their emotional support. So, why is it that we don't recognize the homeless animals as the emotional support pets for the homeless when we know that they are the lifeline? They keep them sane. They give them a purpose to get up in the morning and go to work, you know? So, why is it that we just ignore that? We shouldn't, you know? In with respects to the housing part of it, it will also benefit to recognize them as an emotional animal to the homeless because then the animal will be protected under the state law. And they will have the availability to have more than one animal by the Sacramento, you know, laws and California laws. It doesn't seem that, I guess I don't hear that conversation happening. I hear a lot of mental health. Let me tell you, a lot of the homeless people, not everybody has mental health issues. Yes, they have anxiety, yes, they have depression, of course, but because it's due to their circumstances that they're living right now. It's not that you're tagging them forever, you know? So, you're going to create a proposal of mental health for what? For how long? For that one individual? I mean, you have to think about that. When you go to therapy, when you go to chiropractor, you go for how many visits? Three, seven, 10, no more than 13? So, if you're going to label somebody with mental health issues label somebody with mental health issues to qualify for your program, what is the dollar amount per individual that you're willing to spend? I just want to leave you with that.
Okay. Thank you, Claudia. Thanks for your thoughtful comments and certainly the importance of pets in all of our lives. So, okay. Don't have anyone else in chambers on item 40? Any callers, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any callers.
Okay. So anybody else wish to address item, Anne?
Supervisor Natoli, I just want to let you know that Mr. Villanueva is on his way down to make a connection with the speaker, to hook her up with animal care, to talk about some of the things that we are in fact doing in animal care for homeless pets.
Okay, great. Claudia, we've got somebody else who will follow up again on your comments. So thanks so much for being an advocate, both you and Dan. Okay. If no one else on item 40, and thank you for the information, Anne. Dan, I'll bring you back to the board. Any other thoughts or comments?
Move the item.
Okay. So move in second then to approve the recommendation as outlined. If there's nothing further, then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Great. Thank you all. Okay.
Okay, so you have two minutes and, or one now. We can wait, or you can take up your nominations, or you have own rank appointments as well.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and wait. We'll take those at the end of the.
Yeah, that's fine.
So just take a brief pause here, and we'll be back in less than a minute.
Yep.
Do you want to stay on air, or are you going to go off air?
No, we'll stay on air. I can mute your mics for you.
Yeah, if you want to do that. Good. Thanks. Okay, we're back in session. And took a brief pause, and we're back for our 230 items. So with that, go ahead, Madam Clerk, call the item.
Okay, item 41. This is response to the April 4, 2022 grand jury report titled, Public Health Office Abandoned by County Board of Supervisors in COVID-19 Crisis.
Okay, thank you, Flo. I see Amanda's here. She's getting warmed up for tomorrow's presentation, so.
That's right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, members of the board. I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's chief fiscal officer. As you know, the Sacramento County Grand Jury reviews and investigates the performance of county, city, and local governing entities and issues reports with findings and recommendations that must be publicly addressed by the recipients. The grand jury report titled, Public Health Office Abandoned by County Board of Supervisors in COVID-19 Crisis, was issued on April 4, 2022, and asserts that there was insufficient support for the COVID-19 pandemic response activities of the Sacramento County Office of Public Health based on the perceived timeliness and engagement of the Board of Supervisors and County Executive during the beginning of the pandemic and a perceived lack of commitment to the enforcement of countywide COVID-19 public health orders. The report includes six findings and six recommendations related to the information in the report. Proposed responses from the Board of Supervisors to the findings and recommendations are included as attachments two and three, respectively. The proposed responses disagree wholly with four of the findings and disagree partially with the remaining two findings for the reasons noted in the responses. Of the six recommendations, the proposed responses indicate that five will not be implemented because they are not warranted or are not reasonable, largely because there are already plans or processes in place that address the subject area of the recommendations. One recommendation that the Board of Supervisors develop and adopt its own continuity of operations plan has been implemented with the current continuity of operations plan in place since 2017. Several departments, including the Office of Emergency Services, Office of the County Executive, Clerk of the Board, and County Council assisted in developing the responses. Should the Board wish to make any revisions to the proposed responses, revised responses would be brought back to the Board for review and approval at a subsequent meeting. Final responses must be sent to the presiding judge of the Superior Court by July 1. With that, I'd be happy to help address any questions or receive any input you may have.
Okay, thanks, ma'am. Let me go to board members first. Any questions or comments regarding the staff report and recommendation on this item? All right. Seeing none. Do we have, I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on item 41?
No, sir. We don't have anyone in queue.
All right.
I'm going to go ahead and close that.
Okay, so we'll close that and bring it back to the board then. Board members?
Need a motion?
We will, yes. If the board members are ready to make a motion. Yep.
Move approval of staff's recommendation for response.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so move in second then to approve the staff recommendation for response, which will then be transmitted to the presiding officer in the grand jury. If there is nothing further, then I would ask for a vote. Very good. Thanks, ma'am. All right. That takes us through business besides the appointments for our own ranks and nominations. So we'll go to those items next. And then we do have some adjournments.
Okay, so for, let's do your own ranks. That would be item 42. And so today, you're considering first five Sacramento Commission, Regional Water Authority, the Sacramento Groundwater Authority, and Public Financing Authority of the County of Sacramento Metro Air Park Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. And so there was a spreadsheet attached that has a little bit more information in terms of the term length. So first five is your first one that's up right now. This is a two-year term, and your two-year term expires July 30 of 2022.
Okay.
Right now, we have Supervisor Serna sitting in as the member, and Supervisor Kennedy is the alternate.
I thought that was a lifetime appointment. No?
I think, I think it is, but we just wanted to memorialize.
He's still alive, so that's good, so.
Are we good with that? Okay, so we'll just keep that the same.
Okay.
Your next one is the Public Financing Authority of the County of Sacramento Metro Air Park Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. I think this is your longest title board yet.
Right.
So right now, we have Supervisor Serna as the member, Supervisor Frost as a member, and also Chairperson Natoli. This is a one-year term, and it looks like you have already expired, so we need to renew that today if possible.
So I might just offer a suggestion that if it's a one-year term, obviously, I have listed a little less than seven months till I conclude my terms. I'm, you know, again, we've had meetings and obviously transacted some action. If it's desire for someone else to serve in that capacity, I know a lot of the heavy lifting has been done. We've still got, I think, another couple, one more meeting, I think, at least before the end of the year. So I just get if there was another member of the board that was interested in getting familiar with that.
I'm happy to step in if.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Very good. And Supervisor Frost, you okay? And I assume Supervisor Serna, obviously, another lifetime appointment. And Mr. Kennedy, were you interested at all in that? Okay, all right. So we'll have Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Desmond, and Supervisor Frost for the one-year appointments.
We'll update the own ranks appointment spreadsheet to reflect that.
Very good.
Okay, next is the Regional Water Authority. Right now, Supervisor Kennedy sits as the member, and his alternate is Carrie Schmitz. And this is a one-year term, expires June 30.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy? Okay.
We're going to leave it the same?
Yes, I see.
Okay, so we will keep that the same and update the expiration. And then we have Sacramento Groundwater Authority. Right now, Supervisor Frost is the member. This is a four-year term, by the way. Expires July 17, 2022. And Mr. Eck is the alternate.
Is Mr. Eck still a part of the, he's still?
I don't know if he's still a county.
I feel like he might have retired, but I'm not entirely sure.
I didn't want to prematurely announce his retirement, but I thought, yeah. And maybe that carries.
You know, I don't know because he's still in the global address book, so I'm not sure. I can't confirm that.
All right. But obviously Supervisor Frost, you want to continue in that stead? Okay.
Okay, and then I'll confirm.
And then I'll confirm, yeah.
If we need to bring this back, we'll bring it back on June 14.
All righty, very good.
Okay, and then let me just double check. That concludes everything for your own ranks for today. And then we can move on to your appointments. And let me grab that, those notes, please. That's item 43. This is your nominations. Okay, you're continuing to July 26. The County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Casumnes. County Service Area 4C, Delta, Elk Grove, Casumnes Cemetery District. The Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board, and the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, Adult and Aging Commission.
Chief of Staff recommend nominating Don Angelo and continue remainder to July 26.
Okay. Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please nominate Manaz Kazari.
Okay. Looks like that's it for that one. Children's Coalition?
Chief of Staff recommend reappointing Cindy Kane and continue remainder to July 26.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee?
Chief of Staff recommend continue that to July 26.
Okay. And first five Sacramento Commission?
Chief of Staff recommend nominating Rebecca Gross.
Human Services Coordinating Council.
Chief of Staff recommend continue that to July 26.
In Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee?
Chief of Staff recommending nominating Eduardo Ribacava. Continue the remainder to July 26.
Public Health Advisory Board?
Chief of Staff recommend continuing to July 26.
Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board?
Please continue to July 12.
And Sacramento County Employees Retirement Board?
No, Supervisor Kennedy wanted to speak to this. The Chiefs of Staff are recommending one week continues to June 14, but I believe Supervisor Kennedy wanted to weigh in.
Thank you, Chair. Briefly, you know, I respect the position of the Chiefs of Staff, but want to say that I encourage the board members to take a look at the applications. There is one application in that is, I mean, one of the most qualified candidates that I have seen apply for any appointment, quite frankly. And that sounds hyperbolic, but it's true. And so I don't see why we are continuing this. But again, I will respect the process and hope that the supervisors will take it upon themselves to look at the applications and find that there is an opportunity here, not only to have someone of supreme qualifications, but also with the ability to add diversity to what has not been the most diverse board in the past. So, thank you.
Good. Okay, thank you Supervisor Kennedy. So we'll continue until next Tuesday.
Okay.
All right.
And let me just note that here. All right. Sacramento County Youth Commission. Supervisor Serna. I'll just go down the road.
Okay, sir.
Okay, Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to July 26.
And Supervisor Kennedy?
Please continue to July 12.
Okay, and Ms. Ross?
Please nominate Abirup Kira. I hope I said that right.
Okay, I think you did. Okay, and Sacramento Environmental Commission?
Chief of Staff recommend continue that to July 26.
Okay, that concludes your nominations. So now it's County Executive comments.
Just briefly, I want to thank you all for your support of the many department head and executive positions that we have been appointing in the last year and a half. I think we're creating a really good team, and I just want to thank you for your support.
Thanks, Anne. Thank you, too. Okay.
Okay, and now it's your turn.
Yeah, we have board member comments, and we have some adjournments. Let me see if there's any comments first. Any board member comments before the adjournments? I know we'll be back in session again tomorrow and all likelihood Thursday as well. So just before we go to the adjournments, for tomorrow's schedule, we have a 10 o'clock item, and we have published that we would come into session at 2 o'clock for the beginning of the budget. That, and you have a sub-agenda for that. But I guess I would just say to board members, depending upon how the morning session goes, and we're going to have a break. I wanted to announce that. I know I've talked to county executives to have a break and then go into budget. But I guess I would just say for calendar planning, plan for a good part of Thursday, I would think, because I don't, you know, with the public comment, we've all been receiving comments regarding different aspects and certainly the presentations. You know, I don't know how far we're going to get tomorrow. I want to be, you know, certainly respectful of people's time as well. So we'll kind of, Anne and I will work certainly as we see things roll out the course of the day. So, all right. With that, then, I'll wait. Two colleagues, districts three and four have adjournments. So Ms. Ross, would you like to lead, and then I'll let Mr. Desmond. So, okay.
Thank you, Chair Natoli. This evening, I'd like to close in memory of a dear friend in Rio Linda, Robert Ryzig, or also known as Bob Ryzig. On April 18 of this year, Bob Ryzig of Rio Linda was called home by his Lord and Savior. Bob was born to Walter and Alice Ryzig on January 11, 1950. The eldest of five children and grew up in Billings, Montana. Bob attended Burlington Grade School, Lewis and Clark Junior High School, and Billings West High School. He was an honor student and excelled in football and track for the Golden Bears. He was also a starting outfielder for the Billings Royals American Legion baseball team. His athletic ability earned him scholarship offers for both Whitman College in Walla Walla, Washington, as well as Montana State University in Bozeman, Montana. Bob chose Whitman College, and to attend there, he was a member of the Fidel Theta Fraternity. Excelled in the classroom while lettering in football, baseball, and track, Bob earned a degree in mathematics. After college, Bob returned to Billings and began working for the Montana Highway Department. Soon after, Bob left Billings, took a position in managerial program with Kmart Corporation and worked there for several years. Bob was on the Board of Directors of High Start in Stockton and was a member of the Chamber of Commerce in Tulare in 1985. He permanently settled in Sacramento area and continued his community service efforts. At the time of his death, Bob was the president of the Rio Linda Alberta Community Water District Board of Directors. Bob suffered from some health issues, but he never lost his amazing sense of humor. He loved performing in the Rio Linda Community Theater. And though he was never one to toot his own horn, his quick wit was, well, as well as his ability to analyze local, state, and national issues from the nonpartisan perspective, helped him make his community a better place. To his kids and grandkids, he gave them the love of reading music, some awesome dance moves, and passed on his sense of humor. Bob was a consistent voice of reason for those around him. He was the biggest supporter of his kids and the best papa to his grandchildren, all of whom he loved unconditionally. He is survived by his children, Allison, Ashley, Jordan, grandchildren Kat, Jacob, and Charlotte, and siblings Doug, Jerry, Patty, and Rick. To those who knew Bob, he was a joy to be around, and he will be truly missed. And Bob had services in Montana, went home to be with his family. And then in the last couple weeks, there were services here in the community because everyone loved him so much. He was a wonderful man, and we will miss him. And may he rest in peace.
Thank you Supervisor Frost, Bob Ryzig. Okay, Mr. Desmond?
Thank you. And I also want to thank Supervisor Frost. I had not, I got to know Bob a little bit through the lunch bunch in North Highlands, had many, many conversations with him up there, and that's very sad, his loss. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to adjourn in memory today of Richard Neolo, Sr. And this, we were trying to get a resolution on the calendar to honor the Neolo Company for 100 years of service in Sacramento, and it's so unfortunate, his passing before we could get that done. Richard, Sr., passed away on Saturday, June 4, 2022, at the age of 99, just 10 days shy of his 100th birthday. If you've bought a car in Sacramento in the past half century, you most likely have visited a Neolo family-owned dealership. Richard was the patriarch of the Neolo family, and he brought the company to Sacramento after its founding in San Francisco. His passing comes as the Neolo Company is one of the largest companies based in the Sacramento region. Richard, after serving as an ensign in the Navy during World War II, went to work for his father, Louis Neolo, at the Packard dealership in San Francisco, which added the Pierce-Arrow automobile line. Eventually, Richard replaced his father as the head of the business. Richard's fortunes changed significantly in the mid-1950s. Packard and Pierce-Arrow went out of business, and Neolo had to find another line of cars to sell. That's when he met Wes Lasher, who had become a lifelong friend. The two forged a partnership and opened a Volkswagen dealership on J Street in Sacramento. Richard and Wes Lasher parted amicably in the late 1950s when Richard bought a Volkswagen dealership on Fulton Avenue. He added Porsche, Audi, BMW, and Acura brands before retiring in the mid-1990s and handing leadership of the company to his son, Rick. Richard's son, Roger, a former supervisor and assembly member, is now the secretary of the company, and his other son, David, is the vice president of the company. Richard graduated from the University of California, Berkeley, in 1943. He is survived by his three sons, Rick, Roger, and David, along with his daughters-in-law, along with his daughters-in-law, many grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. The death of Richard Neelo is an extraordinary loss to his family and the community, but he certainly lived a glorious and successful life for which his entire family is proud and grateful. Our hearts go out to his friends and family as they cope with his loss, and his wonderful legacy will live on. Mr. Chair, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Richard Neelo, Sr.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Certainly very nice thoughts and comments shared by colleagues, and I had a chance to meet Richard Neelo, Sr. a couple of different occasions. And I know, obviously, someone who was very well-respected, both in the business community but in the community as a whole, and I think you captured it very well. So Sacramento lost two very fine gentlemen, people who've contributed to daily life but also made a difference in our community. So today, we will adjourn in memory and certainly in honor of Bob Ryzik and Richard Neelo, Sr., and we certainly send out our thoughts and prayers to the family members. And again, they've made a difference in this community, and we appreciate them, and we honor them today with an adjournment in their memory. So unless there's anything else before this board, we will adjourn until tomorrow morning at 10 a.m.